Cool.
Yeah. Wrap up there. I cleared my river journey.
It's like, okay, stop.
Yeah, they just did. Go for it. Yeah, so it's nice for me and I've done this. All right.
Awesome. The middle for the hundred cent.
Oh, great.
Oh, I think I'm doing that next month, too. Yeah. So.
What crap.
Marlon Morris switching.
Okay.
She's.
Yeah, nice. Yeah, there'll be some C M R stuff, but it could be.
We're told.
Yeah. When he made. He's getting one. Running windows. Yeah, all day. Yeah.
Attendants minutes.
Have you ever seen them?
Yeah, they're like.
All of my ass, you know.
Yeah.
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 Was available not enough.
You, um. You go out and rock.
Two, maybe. I, um. Well, three nights with the apps. You know, with the.
Well.
Yeah, she, um, brief chat with a party on her probably, you know, chasing. Pretty familiar. Well, it can be really hard and they're all of us, you know, choices, yes. And she went, oh, she said, got it.
Me.
All right. And we should go back to that. Snacks. Snacks. All the utensils. All the utensils. Ring up. Ring up. Food bowls. Food bowls. And she finished up the hillside. And she finished up the hillside.
Here we go. Here we go.
Did not complain. Did not complain. Thick. Thick. Yeah. Yeah.
Amazing. Amazing.
I was scared of more than was. I was scared of more than was.
Sure. Sure.
They run over the path back. They run over the path back.
That things are especially is that's. That things are especially is that's. That they. That they. That in during that, but insurance were reporting them. That in during that, but insurance were reporting them.
Yeah, we got to a full day, we can do this, it's a matter. Yeah, we got to a full day, we can do this, it's a matter. Jump down the next city and. Jump down the next city and. Or we have time to kind of scan. Or we have time to kind of scan. Basically two hours on all directions. Basically two hours on all directions.
Okay. Okay. Nice mics are effective. Nice mics are effective.
All. All.
Ask to unmute. I'm clicking the ask to unmute button.
Join the Saxon until the very last.
Okay. That's Hassan, he's cool. Anne Brown. That's you, can you speak?
Good morning.
That. Loud and clear.
Hi, Anne.
Hi, guys. I can hear Lance, but not anyone else yet.
Try Galena again.
Can you hear me now?
Not well.
No.
Yep.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Wow, the back of my head is funny looking. How are you, Anne? How's things out east?
Aw, lovely. I'm sitting here looking at the lake, you want to see?
Ah, yes.
You see it?
Wow. Keep talking so that you command the screen.
Can you see it? Can you see the lake right there? Can you see it? About ten feet away.
Wow, you can go for a swim.
I've already done that.
You are winning.
Hi, Maura. You're probably swimming, too.
I haven't been swimming yet. I'm, I'm still inland in Grand Rapids.
Okay.
But soon enough, this weekend, I'll be in the lake.
Carmen has informed me that Doug Thule unfortunately isn't able to join us today, so we'll have to do our best without him. But we do have James Van Hoosier as a kind of second fiddle.
Or substitute.
I missed that, Lance. Who is it that's not available?
Doug Thule is not avail.
I see, he's not on here.
Is, so that's good.
How's the puppy, Maura?
Oh, she's a handful.
As they are. What's her name again? Do we know? I don't know.
Ruby is her name.
Ruby, how cute.
Yeah.
Ruby around, can you hold her up?
She's not in the room with me, she's too distracting. She's downstairs. Maybe if we take a break, I'll, uh, go get her.
Yeah.
There will be no respite. We're pushing straight through to noon. Straight on till morning. Galena's threatening to filibuster this thing, though, so we'll see. Um, we are at nine twenty-nine. Brandy Hatfield has arrived, hooray. Good morning, Brandy. How are you? All right, do I need to wait for the clock to tick? I'll wait. Brandy, thank you for all those numbers. Thank you for all the numbers.
She's good at those.
That's right. And it is nine thirty, so we are going, going to open this special meeting of the San Miguel County Board of County Commissioners. Today is Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Present in the room are Commissioner Gleason and myself. Present on the Zoom is Commissioner Brown, a number of staff, and not yet any citizens, but they might show up. Maybe. Okay. With that, we are called to order. We have called the roll, and we are going to embark on a moment of silence for grounding and gratitude. Thank you, everyone. We are lucky to be here. We are now at item four, a review of our agenda. Commissioners, do you have any suggestions for today's agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a slight adjustment in item. Jared, are you about to speak to the ground pounders revision?
Um, so last week, when we saw the original, uh, attachment that had been put to the agenda, um, it listed the entire bid that we had received from ground pounders, who we chose to award the contract for the first two gravel roads, fifty-seven P and sixty M. And, um, I wanted it made more clear that the board was only authorizing those two roads for funding for twenty twenty-five. And the contract, which is open for four additional years, allows us to, to request additional roads um, in the future during subsequent years in those budget processes. But I wanted it understood by the public that we were not engaging in all of those roads, nor were we allocating funding for all of those roads. Um, so that change was made last week, but unfortunately, that version that specifies that for twenty twenty-five, we're only going to embark on these two gravel replacements on those roads, uh, would occur. So, uh, when that was discovered yesterday, that the, the newest version had not been in there, we included that. It is the exact same bid, except for the clarification that for twenty twenty-five, we're only embarking on those two roads with ground powers.
And Carmen was kind enough to hand me a hard copy. Carmen, could you email this new most, um, recent to Anne, please? And Galena, I'll share this with you when the time comes, but Mike is exactly right. It's the same numbers, it's just more specificity. Um, so when we get to that, we'll all have that information updated. Um, anything else regarding the agenda before we move to public comment for items that aren't on the agenda? I hear silence, so we'll move to item number five, which is public comment for items not on the agenda. I do not see any hands up in the Zoom. I do not see any hands up in the room. So we will move to the consent agenda. Commissioners, do you have anything you'd care to discuss or pull from the consent agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd just like to thank Gordon and, um, Jim for their continued service on the Board of Adjustment.
Well said, Anne. Thank you for that. You are right. That is one of those boards that is often quiet, but when it meets, sometimes it's a tough sledding.
I move to approve the consent agenda. With that addendum to item F for the ground pounders, um.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Motion carries on to item seven A. This is a consideration of the Public Trustee Report for the first quarter of January first, twenty twenty-five through March thirty-first. And Brandy Hatfield is here with us. Brandy, please come up to a microphone. And if you would like to walk us through this, we are ready for you.
This first quarter just says that we did sixty-seven releases in twenty twenty-five compared to ninety-seven for the first quarter of last year. Uh, so a change of thirty, but because of the fee change, we actually came out ahead. Five hundred and fifty-five dollars. And the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, we had. a hundred and eighty-five dollars in foreclosure fees, and we have yet to collect any collect any fees for two thousand and twenty-five. So there's a negatives one seventy-five for an overall gain and three hundred and seventy. And then down below is the number of foreclosures we've opened two so far in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-five compared to two in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. So no change there.
You steady state. Any questions, Commissioners?
No, sir.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to accept the public trustee report.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Aye as well. Motion carries. We are on to the seven B, consideration of the public trustee report for the second quarter, which is April first, two thousand and twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Brandy remains with us and that report is in our pocket.
So similar to the first quarter, or I guess not similar, we did do twelve more releases for the first quarter twenty or second quarter of two thousand and twenty-five compared to the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. We have not collected any foreclosure fees yet for the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-five. And for a total earnings of one thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. And then as far as foreclosures go, we've remained the same as the second quarter of twenty-four to twenty-five. No change.
Brandy, do we interpret this as pretty much good news?
Yeah.
Good.
Either people are paying off their mortgages or they're refinancing, so.
Excellent. Commissioners, again, I would entertain a motion to accept this public trustee report.
I move to approve this pub- public trustee report for the second quarter, April first, two thousand and twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. We are on to item C, consideration of the chair's signature on resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-four regarding the approval and designation of public depositories in which the treasurer may deposit and invest public funds. Brandy, tell us about where we are in our banking resolution, please.
So this is just basically the same resolution that we did a few years ago, but there's a new local government pooling company, Centennial State Liquid Investment Pool out of Denver, and I wanted to add them to the list of possible depositories. Just kind of updating it with their name on it.
Can you tell us more about Centennial State? What is attractive about them?
Well, there's not many places that accept public funds, so anytime somebody will take public money, we like that. And so they these guys have been around for I don't know, maybe two years, but they've got they've taken two employees from other investment pools that we've worked with in the past, and so they give us good interest. And
Great.
They're great to work with.
Jared.
Brandy, have we had any problem with any of our existing depositories, like rejecting our deposits at all? I I recall we've, you know, I've heard over the past that when some local governments have gotten like a big check for pelts or for like a federal mineral lease or other kind of revenues, banks have actually told them, thanks, but no thanks. And and I just wondered if we've been in that scenario.
No, the two at we bank with Alpine Bank the most. Everything runs through that that bank, and they've actually offered us a pretty decent interest rate just to compete with the investment pools. But a few years ago, Chase was new, and so I kind of reached out to them lightly and they didn't seem very interested, so every all the local banks are on here with the exception of Chase.
I like the idea of keeping our banking as local as possible. I also understand the wisdom of spreading our portfolio out and so I think that this menu of options is a good idea, and thanks for adding one more possibility. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners?
I have a question. Um, you know, we I'm we've never talked about this, actually, I realize in my two years as Commissioner, and I'm curious, are we keeping our funds in like a money market account or are there investment accounts that we're using? Because I know interest rates are pretty high right now. We wouldn't want it just in like a savings account or a checking account. You want to just spend a couple minutes telling us what your approach is to that, Brandy? Do you mind?
So Alpine Bank, we have it in a money market account, and I'm not sure. I can't remember the exact name of it, but it's something better than a normal money market account where they do try and match the interest rates of the investment pools. A and B, we have a CD there, US Bank, Colorado Bank, or Community Banks of Colorado, and Dolores State Bank. We do not have any money there because their interest rates aren't competitive. And then Citizen State Bank has a product similar to Alpine Bank, and so it's a money market type account that we get really good interest on. LPL Financial is more of bonds, and so we hold those to maturity so we get good interest and then we're not losing money on those. And then ColoTrust, C-Safe, C-SIP, and Centennial State Liquid Investment Pool are all local government pooling companies, and so they're all liquid within about twenty-four to forty-eight hours, but we're still getting four percent or just over four percent on the money that we hold there. So we try and keep as little as possible in the Alpine operating account and transfer from the money market as needed, so we're earning interest on all the money that we have.
And is that basically the approach that is prudent to take, or would we ever try for investments with higher yields? I'm not suggesting that we do. I'm just really curious.
Jared's got his hand up.
Just to to throw a little bit of info into the bunch here, you know, local governments are limited in what we can invest in by statute, and so there is there are not as many options to you know, we can't invest directly into equities. We can't direct investing directly into a number of things. That's why Colorado has a lot of these local government investment pools or LGIPs as they're known. And so I I think that, you know, it's it's prudent to keep money moving around in these LGIPs as possible while managing the, you know, the financial resources on a cap, you know, our cash, daily cash needs. And it's just one of those things that as Brandy mentioned, the one of the first rules of investment for local governments is liquidity. Like if we need to pull that money quickly, we can get it in, as Brandy said, like forty-eight hours. And if there's an emergency, if something were to happen, and so that's that that's kind of the I remember the acronym from my previous days. We use the acronym SLI, right? Safety, making sure that you know, if nothing, your cash is going to be, you know, you're going to get a dollar back for every dollar you invest. Liquidity is just having that cash available, and then yield is kind of the third thing down the chain. And I I think that all these LGIPs manage that appropriately, that that's also their approach. And, you know, we we are getting pretty good returns without seeking kind of anything that's really risky, so.
It's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's fine.
That's SLI. Brandy, is this management of our portfolio something that you do solo, or do you have an advisor, or do you just kind of keep things in a pattern that has been established over the years?
Uh, kind of both. I mean, the LPL Financial, I have advisors and they let me know when the bonds expire and what looks good. Kind of the same with the CDs, but the the calls ColoTrust, C-Safe, C-SIP, and Centennial State Liquid Investment Pool, they do all of that. So the money just sits there and we watch it grow, basically.
Great. Any other questions, Commissioners? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the chair's signature on resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-four.
I'll make that motion. I move to approve the chair's signature on resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-four regarding the approval and designation of public depositories in which the treasurer may deposit and invest public funds.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Motion carries. We are moving to item seven D, which is consideration of the chair's signature on the semi-annual report from the treasurer's funds from January first, two thousand and twenty-five to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Hello, Brandy.
Uh, this is just a semi-annual report that shows the funds and where they their ending balance as of June thirtieth. It shows the taxes collected, miscellaneous receipts, abatements, fees and disbursements for all the money that the county holds.
Thank you, Brandy, and I will remind us all that this is a snapshot in time and not a it's a fluid document, you know, the words. So with that knowledge, I'm content with it, but I'm happy to hear questions or comments from Commissioners or staff or anyone in the in the meeting. Any comments, questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the chair's signature.
I as well do not have any questions. Really appreciate you getting this at this point. That's very enlightening. So I move to approve the chair's signature on this semi-annual report from the treasurer's funds from January first, two thousand and twenty-five to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Brandy, your work here is done. Thank you so much. Have a great afternoon.
Thanks, man.
We are now on to item seven E, which will be a discussion with the town of Telluride concerning the Fruin Building, the West Wing at three thirty-five West Colorado Avenue in Telluride, and James Van Hoosier, our community housing manager for the town of Telluride, is with us. Good morning, Mr. Hoosier.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Commissioner Waring, James Van Hoosier, Town of Telluride. So we are here to discuss this morning the possible redevelopment of the county-owned Fruin site just next door. We had a town council meeting on July twenty-second that was a full update on the completion of phase three of the town's overall facilities master plan. I will not bore you with the details of the renovations of Parks Facilities and Rebecca Hall, et cetera. However, as you know, we are operating under a memorandum of understanding to work together, the town and county, on a partnership to redevelop the Fruin site as a joint government facility. I'm saying this mostly for the listening public. I know that you are well aware. I'd like to run through a few of the slides from that presentation to give you the the background of where we were, what was presented to council as far as what has happened since we last spoke, and then briefly touch on next steps and give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have. My request going into this, so it we're going to show floor plans. We're going to show elevations. My request would be that we not get so granular as to picking out desk locations and moving moving partition walls. I know it's exciting. My council wanted to do that, too. And if it happens, it happens. I just wanted to set that expectation that these things are in flux. They will change or, you know, anticipated a change. We already have some ideas internally that staff has been chatting about to the point is, the program will continue to be refined to make it the best possible use for both town and county and retail on the ground floor. However, with that said, if there are any glaring issues that, you know, you're not seeing incorporated in the program, please let us know. So with that, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, Anne, are you seeing that?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay. Okay, so project overview, phases and scope. So we just completed phase three of the overall Town of Telluride facilities master plan, and the piece that is relevant to the county in that is the redevelopment of the Fruin side at Aspen in Colorado. Some of the things that occurred during phase three related to that project where we went to hark with a work session to get feedback on the conceptual preliminary design. Also got looking to get feedback on possible relocations of the historic sheds that are also on that site. We developed, yeah, developed sod concepts to talk to hark about, took and also took the preliminary design to a cost estimating phase to see how much it might cost to actually develop. Some of the project goals, co-locations of departments, you know, accommodating growth, these are things that are relevant to both town and county. Phase one was, you know, selection of sites, and this ended up with being the best option to co-locate as many county and town departments as possible in these two buildings right next to each other to you know, that that economies of scale and ease of use for the public is really, I think, the main reason we are here talking today. This was the sort of initial phase two programming that we were looking at that might be accomplished in in the new shared building. I'm going to skip over this as it has been further refined. These were the initial floor plans that were developed as part of phase two. You can see on the ground floor about four thousand square feet of retail space proposed, level two of about forty-five hundred square feet of offices as well as parking, and then about a sixty-five hundred square foot third level of office space with some exterior deck. That's this in green that I'm highlighting on that level.
And James, I know some folks might be curious on the first level with the gray area that the back is, and that is dirt.
That is dirt. Actually, yes.
Grade of the road, the street on Aspen as behind the first floor would be dirt.
Absolutely. Yes, the 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 grade at the north of the site is much higher than at the south. It's a similar situation as to this building. If you can picture, when you walk outside from the back of the Miramani Building, you are walking out onto the second story, and so that is that is the grade change. That's why the parking appears to be on the quote-unquote second level of these floor plans.
James, excuse me. There's a gentleman here who's squinting trying to see this small print. Would you like to just come up and be a little closer? There's an extra chair. Okay, great.
Understood, yeah. Our axonomic view of the initial massing that went to hark, the town council direction from phase two, explore shed relocation, explore the addition of a rooftop deck to this structure, develop the MOU of the county, and proceed with preliminary design for renovations. These were all the tasks that occurred in phase three of the project. Going to run you through the preliminary design of phase three. So new build would be of this facility, co-locating of these five county departments and six town departments, as well as opportunities for storage, parking, and retail space on the ground floor. Skipping over town hall floor plans real quick.
James, I just have to ask.
Sure.
It's a new word to me, and I'm I love it, but I don't know what it means. It's a new word to me and I'm, I love it, but I don't know what it means. Axonometric?
Absolutely. That's just this three-quarter view of, you know, you're kind of peeking in to, um, so it's a di- kind of a different way to, rather than just looking at a flat floor plan, you can kind of get a perspective.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question as well. Um, the, the offices or the departments that you listed as going into the new facility, the county departments, um, Mike, is that set in stone or was that just sort of, we provided that as examples? I, I
I apologize. What was the first part of your question?
Yeah, the, um, there was a slide that meant or listed the departments from the county that would likely go in the redeveloped Fruin Building, and I'm just wondering how if that was, is that is set in stone or was that just?
No, that is not set in stone.
That was just provided for sort of scoping purposes.
Correct. And then some of the, uh, adjacencies such as, uh, public's, um, regular use of building and planning departments obviously makes sense to go together, but everything else is fungible as far as where it could go, especially if we're moving spaces out of that area. We've often discussed that we wanted to increase the size of the commissioner meeting room, and we will be looking to remodel our portions of the second, third floor of Miramonte to accommodate that as well as where we would move around other departments and offices. It just allows us an extra piece from which, uh, to move things around.
Yep, yep, really. And really want to emphasize that any of this can shift. Uh, the county provided us some, you know, possible options, uh, because we need to, we need to be able to map it out to see that things can fit. And then once we're able to prove that out, however you care to program the space is perfectly fine.
One of the only ones that is, uh, not set in stone, but more likely, uh, than all the others is the coroner space because of their logistical needs of having se- uh, confidential, secure ingress egress on that grade level, uh, behind the second floor. Um, and that's okay.
Yeah, no, yeah, having direct access to the parking is important for that department.
James, you were very clear at the outset that you didn't want us to get into desks and partition walls, and I think we're all, um, in agreement there, but I'm wondering will there be a meeting when we actually do have a fairly firm list that at least both staffs have agreed on? And then both boards will, um, really dig in, or do we just kind of keep noodling along and making sure that everything will fit and then build the space and then figure it out? Once it's built, how do we?
Uh, you know, that, that's a, that's at your pleasure. Uh, these types of decisions are generally, in my opinion, best made at the staff level, making sure that there's coordination with both, um, both teams. Certainly, any final decisions will come to you, but with strong recommendations from your teams, um, as far as what's gonna work best for, um, programming.
Thanks. Two quick questions before you proceed.
Yep.
Uh, commissioners, how does that strategy sound to you? Do you, um, feel comfortable with the idea of our staffs working closely together and giving us a strong recommendation at the end of those long conversations?
I do. I think that's less cooked in the kitchen and it's gonna create more clarity and communication.
Great.
I know our staff will be able to relay any of our thoughts and concerns that are really
Great. Uh, Commissioner Brown, do you share that view?
Very much so.
Excellent, as do I. And then, James, the follow-up question I would have is how does your council view that question? Are they also on the same hands-off until the very end and accept a strong recommendation with the knowledge that they could tweak it if they needed to, but?
Uh, yes, that has been their approach since, uh, the beginning of this, uh, process. And again, with the town, we're, we're looking, we, this is all town buildings, so they have no interest in, um, getting granular on six different sites, so.
Thank you. I'm reassured that there's a, a plan in place and that we are part of the plan, but not integral.
Perfect. Okay, so now I'm gonna dive into the, uh, recently completed Phase 3 of the site. So, um, again, this was the massing that went to Hark and then the specific questions that um, town council directed staff and consultants to follow up on. Can the sheds be relocated? Uh, can we do a rooftop deck? Um, this was a rooftop deck proposal that was shown to council in, uh, March, uh, that they asked us to proceed with to, um, the to our Hark work session in May. I will talk about that feedback in a moment. And then the, um, shed relocation proposal that was presented to Hark in work session was only to move Shed 80, which is the shed not on the corner of this site. Um, it is, has been determined that that shed is not original to this location. It has been moved from who knows where, but somewhere else in town prior. Um, and so town council's direction was to follow up with Hark, see, uh, what the appetite potentially would be for a relocation of that shed while maintaining Shed number 81, the shed on the corner in its current location. Um, this is an update on, um, the rooftop deck concept. Uh, we got great feedback from Hark on mass and scale in, uh, at our, um, May meeting. And one of the, uh, main, one of their main points was, uh, to push massing of the third story farther back off of Aspen Street and Colorado Avenue, um, which is something that we achieved through the the design revision process. Through that process, um, the design team was able to get approximately the same amount of outdoor space on that second level, or I guess it'd be, you know, the deck area of the third story. Um, as we were contemplating on a potential fourth story deck. So, um, having that amount of outdoor space um, eliminated the need, desire, necessity for a true rooftop deck, which is also more complicated to execute, um, given height restrictions and egress, ingress, um, and um, town council ended up giving direction that this was an appropriate way forward as opposed to trying to do a full true rooftop deck, found the size of the proposed debt, new deck to be adequate. Wanted to flag that for you and confirm if you agree or not.
Commissioners, how do you feel about losing 185 square feet from the a deck?
I feel fine about that. I heard a lot of concerns from the community about that mass and scale, especially out on Colorado Avenue. So I think that's a really good solution.
Commissioner Brown?
Me too. Um, just asking if Galena could put the mic a little closer to her mouth, but I, I heard what you said.
Okay, thanks, Anne.
Yeah, thank you.
Today too, so.
You're doing fine. Yeah, no, I think that's appropriate. I mean, it makes perfect sense.
James, you've got your two commissioners. Here's three.
Great. Thank you very much, commissioners. Uh, shed relocation discussion at Hark went well. Um, they are amenable to, and again, the, this was a work session, no binding direction given. However, they indicated that they would be amenable to the relocation of Shed 81. I will note that, um, the design team, in conjunction with discussions with county staff, had proposed the relocation of this shed to the middle of the Goose Park, um, as a picnic structure or, or something else. And Hark was not amenable to that location. Uh, it's very important to them that this shed remain on an alley um, to preserve its existing and historic context. I will note that that is now a, currently an open question. We do not have a a site identified for the relocation of that shed. That is something that we will need to continue to work together on as far as um, where that shed could go that maintains an alley location, uh, within the historic district. We've got a couple ideas, but none of them fully determined or fleshed out. Um, to achieve the program necessary uh, on the redevelopment at 335 West Colorado, staff council and the consultants do believe that it will be necessary to relocate that shed, so wanted to flag that. It's something that we're still looking for, uh, uh, looking for a home for this shed.
James, I listened carefully as you were talking about the effort to find that space and you mentioned we'd work together. But I'll propose that it's gonna be in your jurisdiction because you guys have all the historic alleys. So we will sup- I imagine support whatever solution that you and your staff and team provide, but I doubt that we're gonna be leading the charge on finding that spot for you.
I would counter, and I'm, I'm looking to, to Mike and Jared for some backup here, uh.
We, we, we've already, we already have some thoughts on potential locations. Um, it's been requested that we have a trash enclosure by several of our neighborhood properties. Um, and this would seemingly fit over the existing trash enclosure, power, et cetera, to, um, kind of keep those areas more secure and it would still be on the alley.
Well, how cool is that?
It's very cool. Uh, and we appreciate, we appreciate the collaboration on, uh, finding a, an appropriate spot for the county-owned shed.
And, and I was just gonna add for, to that for commissioners, yeah, we we as a county do have limited space or limited ownership of property within town boundaries, you know, we're kind of in that one location here. And so we're trying to identify how best to potentially reuse. Um, it is gonna be an effort because we're gonna have to move a transformer and natural gas supply. Um, but conceptually, we can, we can see this happening, particularly as we would be redeveloping this, you know, and the Miramonte site as well, so.
Yep.
Bobby.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, um, review, and again, um, as, as we noted, these there's no reason that these cannot change should you choose to. I believe the town is fairly baked as far as, uh, you know, based on other, um, re-models and redevelopments, uh, it is likely that these are the town departments that would be in the new building, uh, and he's, uh, these are the proposed county departments, um, including the ones that were added in Phase 3. Again, you have, you will have the Space 2 program as, as staff so chooses, but town departments, county departments, and then, uh, shared spaces. So, uh, one of the exciting, in my opinion, opportunities of, uh, doing this redevelopment is to be able to co-locate and share some of those meeting rooms, small and large pantries, collaboration spaces, outdoor decks, um, you know, neither juris- there's a great demand in both jurisdictions for these types of spaces, but there's some efficiencies to be gained if we can, if we can collaborate and, and share on large conference rooms and and whatnot. So I, to me, that's one of the more exciting um, pieces of this collaboration. Um, this is an updated massings, uh, diagram that I won't spend too much time on. It's a little bit nerdy, but, um, one of the things that the Hark work session helped us reframe is one of the challenges we were running up against is you can see in this, um, where I've got my cursor here, you can see that the original proposal had a third story that was much larger than either the first or second stories, and that just programmatically was working okay, but was, um, challenging from a, a mass and scale and design perspective. So, um, by enlarging the second story while shrinking the third story slightly, uh, we're able to get a massing that stacks better, uh, from a buildability standpoint, from a usability standpoint, and from a, um, you know, Hark guidelines standpoint. So that was a, um, a very fruitful part of that conversation.
James, before you go on there, um, I'm assuming then we lose a bunch of parking then in the back, um, off that second floor?
Not true, Anne, and I will show you that magic trick in a second.
Okay, good.
But good catch. Uh, mass, current massing versus proposed, um. Okay, um, now we're going to get into the, um, proposed for now, um, for second, third story floor plans. The ground level is proposed to be retail in the front with, um, a, with opportunities for storage in the back. Um, the gray block you can see is underground. It is, it is buried um, due to the grade change, um, although, you know, the, the retail in the front, that's you know, just your standard Main Street frontage there. One thing I want to note is that the, uh, the, currently the storage cannot be used for anything else due to, um, floor area limitations by the Telluride Land Use Code. This building has been designed to, um, take every advantage of, um, square footage available by right under the code. There is, um, a thought that if additional expansion of town and or county offices is needed in the future, that either some of the retail space and or some of the storage space could be converted into additional office space. That would necessitate a, an additional town land use process called a PUD, a Planned Unit Development, to allow for that change in use. Uh, town council's direction was to cross that bridge if and when we get to it, rather than, um, try and codify any PUD variations at this time. Um, I agree with that direction, but wanted to have this board cosign that as well because there are no other, uh, we are not seeking a change in height. We are not seeking any other, um, things that would necessitate a PUD at this time. Um, and since the building, since it is just, would just be a change in use PUD, it would be a quote unquote, easy thing to accomplish further down the line, uh, should the jurisdictions determine that that is necessary. Have I made myself clear or just confused things?
That's clear. And I, I do have a question slash comment.
Right.
I, I am understanding that the retail component is gonna play into the, the financial viability of this project, and so cutting into that retail space at this point probably also seems problematic, um, for that very reason. Uh, is that true?
Uh, I, you know, um, the retail is an important component of this project for many reasons, you know, uh, Main Street vitality, uh, financing, um, there's lots of good reasons to do it, and it's been the direction of my board at least to, you know, keep keep this a, a vital, um, portion of Main Street for now, um, anyway, and, um, you know.
Right, but retail versus other uses that would potentially create vitality on Main Street but are not real revenue generators, i.e. the current uses i- in the Fruin Building are more like community kind of serving, uh, spaces.
Sure. Um, and you know, and retail's a, retail's a broad term, uh, you know, like there, you know, if, if there's a desire from these boards to, I'm not, I'm not picking tenants. How about that? Uh, you know, that will be, that will be up to, um, BOCC and town council, uh, ultimately, so.
Well, that all makes sense to me, and I think that bridge can be crossed when it's needed. That's good to know that.
Yep.
There may be a need in the future, and so it is helpful to know that there could be a path forward.
Right, and that, you know, that part of the exercise is how do you accommodate for growth? And, um, this is, this is the option that has, has been settled on, so just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, that makes perfect sense to me as well, James. I just, um, have a question that I was putting aside for a minute, but I'll bring it up now is when does the county begin our own program planning in terms of where things are gonna go and how much space we need for, you know, whether it's in the new Fruin Building or the redevelopment of the Miramonte Building? And, um, I guess, having not done that work yet, I, I nevertheless assume that the county staff feels that what we are potentially getting out of the Fruin Building is sufficient and that you guys have bought into the idea of, um, the retail space being flexible down the road but not needed now. Does, is that correct, county staff?
Jared?
Um, Commissioner Brown, we, we have engaged in some, I, I suppose, a little better than back of the napkin programming, um, for staff, and we, we have prioritized and talked with James and the team continually about making sure
about making sure it makes sense for us. You know, and, and so we, we have been thinking of this. We have been doing some life programming, not to the effort that the town has undertaken. But we, we do believe we're getting a fair and good deal on kind of this partnership with town, so.
That's reassuring, and I, I, that part I'm not surprised by. But the question is, do you feel like not only is it fair, but is it sufficient space for our, you know, medium-term needs?
Yeah, and so one of the things during this exercise was the analysis of various types of roles that we have in both governmental organizations and sizing of offices and/or workspaces. As we know, when we got the Miramonte Building, it was remodeled from being a restaurant, and so not all the spaces were necessarily thought of in a very space-efficient way. Whereas this building will have a very standardized amount of space for department head offices versus frontline staff and/or other types of employees, depending on what their public-facing needs are, what their logistical files or storage or computer needs are. And this is going to be a much better use of space, in our opinion, even though it's going to be a change some of our existing, where some people have enormous offices and some people have closets. But yes, I do think that it is going to be a ample use of space that will allow us to grow modestly in the future. I don't think we ever envisioned that we're going to have a massive expansion of county staff, even should our population, when we look at our population estimates from NOLA, we know that San Miguel County, due to its geographic constraints and others, is not going to grow in an enormous way. And so we're trying to size those. And then when you think of the other reality that a Roman Bridge, similar to the Town's Public Works, our Sheriff's Office, we're all, those areas that are more expansion and contraction-based, based off of resident demands and additional numbers of residents, those aren't going to be affected by this.
And is that part of your line of thinking for locating, for instance, the Building Department, the Planning Department, Human Services, because they're more public-facing?
Yes.
Serving offices, so to be able to better, like, delegate those offices to, I, I mean, it makes a lot of sense to me to.
Correct, as well as the adjacent to the public who might come in. We often have folks that will come to us for town-related matters, and we like this idea that it was a one-stop shop where instead of saying, actually, you need to go down three floors and over four blocks, you can just go down one floor and you're going to get those same services. So you come for anything, building and planning in the town or the county, you're coming to one space. As well as other similar types of whether you want to see the town manager or attorney or council members or commissioners, it's a pretty central location for the public to know and access.
Great. Any further questions before I reshare screen and move on to some other fun stuff? Great. Okay, so this is the second-level floor plan that is generally parking and town offices. The proposed, there, as Mike was talking about, that is important to have the coroner's office located discreetly off on-grade with access, easy access to parking. So that is a county office that is proposed on the quote-unquote town floor. And then any space in dark green, these are shared spaces. So again, not quote-unquote town space or county space. These would be conference rooms, pantries that are available for both jurisdictions. We are also noting, and again, don't have to do these, but on both the second and third floor shown where connections to Miramonte can occur. There's one here on the second floor that goes into this small pantry. Internal connectivity between the two buildings is something that we were interested in exploring and again, want to emphasize this is not necessarily the county's Miramonte Building connecting to the town's floor. These, these are shared spaces here, and you'll see a similar situation on the third floor that houses most of the county spaces. And to get to your question on parking, the way we were able to not lose any parking while still expanding the second floor was to revert to a tandem situation for eight of the spaces. So you would park, you know, park tail-to-tail. We would not necessarily propose this configuration for a full retail building or certainly not a residential building. But we have found that this type of parking does tend to work well for government facilities. It is how existing Town Hall is parked, and it's how the existing Fruen Building is parked. So both town and county staff are familiar with this type of parking. It's efficient, it saves about 1,100 square feet of just what would be wasted drive aisle that we were then able to use as usable square footage, rather than, you know, it's, it's a way to minimize the paving while maximizing the parking. So that is something that I wanted to call out specifically. We do have Town Council buy-in for that concept. Something else I wanted to note, so we've got 11, we have 11 parking spaces depicted right now. We are looking at every possible way to possibly squeeze in a 12th. And something else I wanted to mention is that Old Town Hall is part of the larger town facilities redevelopment, will no longer be programmed with offices. It is going to, the plan is to have it revert to a true old-fashioned meeting hall and have it be back as Town Council chambers, which means that there will be no staff parking in those eight to 10 spaces. So that is an opportunity for at least town staff overflow, possibly county as well. Anyway, I know parking is always on everyone's mind, so I wanted to sort of flesh that out a little bit.
Great.
Cool. I am going to switch slides real quick. Hot off the presses, I had asked the design team to incorporate some changes that Mike and Jared had asked us to investigate for the third floor, and I received those right now, so.
It's always safe to open.
Always, let's, let's, let's just roll the dice and open up a brand-new PowerPoint that I haven't looked at yet. That's always really smart.
You're a brave man.
But no, I don't, I don't think, I think this is going to be good. Okay, that looks like that's popping up. And again, I apologize, I have not reviewed, but I know there were a few, a few of the changes that I can see right off the bat were some requests by county staff to relocate some of the private offices to this northern wall so that more light is able to be filtered directly into those offices. It's a, a big request of, of county staff as well as a private office here on the corner on the western side of the back of this building, as well as some moves, some doors have moved to really be able to make sure that any of the county offices can be fully secured, cordoned off from any type of mixed-use, communal-use, potential public-use, open-house use. So those are some of the, the design changes that I am clocking. Mike, if you see anything I am missing.
I, I see a lot of the things reflected that we discussed. The one that is not is where the, the Sally Port is on the third floor into the meeting room. Because our commissioners actually have offices, I know, I don't believe city council members have individual offices.
That is correct.
Facilities, but county commissioners do, and they often have meetings with constituents in their offices. We had asked for that on the bottom right, where that cut, the walkthrough is from the Miramonte, because that is in the existing commissioner office, that walkthrough, that means the, the current commissioner meeting, our office area will be gone. I asked for those to, inside the conference table, for those three offices to be facing Colorado Avenue where that conference table is shown. I do see where they reflect that we had asked for a parapet or some sort of partition wall in the public space so that you don't have public sitting directly in front of the commissioners' offices, as they often have individual constituent meetings in their respective offices. But the change of the offices that we're going to be facing, the east with no windows, to the south or to the north, where they will have windows, is great. I think we can still, as James already described, we're still going to be moving around areas within here, but that's a good first, first response to what we had raised as concerns. I think one of the main, and I'll let you keep going before I bring up the one question I have, which is really about, I want to make sure that there's some level of alignment between what Town Council is envisioning and what the commissioners would like to see, as far as the public's use of that space, in particular, the outdoor area shown on the bottom left that wraps around, as well as what types of organizations or events could occur in these green, shared-meeting spaces. I know it's, it's been a bit of a concern of ours to ensure that these, such as with the county's current practice, where we let nonprofits, non-political, nonpartisan organizations use our regular meeting room here in the commissioner room. I think we would like to see that type of use continue for the, some of these public shared spaces. But I don't, I personally had a reservation about renting these for weddings, events, or other private events that might impact county operations and/or the public's use of our county offices.
Yeah, so let me orient, thank you, Mike. Let's orient on this floor a little bit. So again, county offices on, to the north. To the south is in this light green, just so you can read the floor plan. That is all exterior, that's that exterior deck space, approximately 400 square, 1,400 square feet. And then the darker green, that's, you know, all envisioned, shared conferencing, pantry, breakout spaces. I will share that it has been an important component of this project to the Town Council that this indoor/outdoor space be some, a space that the public can use. Now, I believe that's more on the open house and you know, spaces for community visioning, plan meetings, and that type of use. It's hard for me to imagine someone wanting to get married in a government building. But that is a discussion that BOCC and council should have to make sure they are aligned as far as what types of groups and what types of uses could occur on, in these, in these spaces. So I, as, as Mike rightly flagged, that is, I believe that to be a topic of conversation.
Commissioner, should we attempt to send a message to our compatriots at Town Hall? And if so, how would we craft it? My inclination personally is to agree with Mike that we are not interested in providing rental space for private functions and that we would be interested in continuing our current policy of nonprofit, nonpartisan, 501(c)(3) use for the community.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it could even be a little bit broader as, depending on what the space really evolves to be, to just serve a basic use, not any sort of private interest. That's a little more broad and.
Okay. Well.
Others don't agree.
Anne, how do you feel about the concept of at least eliminating the idea of private usage in these public spaces?
I think that's appropriate. I'm, I'm trying to get my head around the idea of people unrelated to the two governments coming in and out of this space during work hours. But I think what James said is that you have allowed to kind of close off the office spaces from here. But it also feels like if, aren't we going to be needing and using these spaces ourselves, in which case, it, you know, for circulation and lunch and meetings and so forth? And so I, I can't really get my head around, I guess, again, whether they're public or nonprofit or nonpartisan or private coming in and out of, out of these office spaces and adjacent during work hours.
I would certainly agree with during work hours, Anne. I don't, I believe that would be an incompatible use, just based on functioning of, of the two governments. I, I don't want to speak for Town Council without getting further understanding or direction, but I believe that the concept would be more evening events. And again, open houses for, you know, for example, town is, you know, county just wrapped up its East End master plan process, town is starting its that visioning process or comprehensive process. You know, these, this type of indoor/outdoor space with the, you know, where the conference rooms are attached to nice decks that could be used when the weather is nice. However, you could duck in, you know, bring, bring all of your poster boards inside if, when it starts to rain. Could be a huge benefit to the community, you know, as we have, we've been holding events outside under tents for, you know, gondola planning and, and whatnot. So again, I believe that is more of the intent. I don't want to, again, I won't speak for council, but I will relay your, your direction and preferences on how this space would be used. But I would certainly agree that it would not, it would need to, any extracurricular use could not interfere during work hours. And yes, want to confirm that any of this would be laid out, designed so that any of the actual working offices, spaces would be completely, be able to be completely cordoned off from anyone trying to just take a tour after hours.
That's great. So what I think I heard you say, James, is it would be primarily used, particularly during government hours, for government uses, related uses, and that any other unrelated uses would be outside work hours? Does that sound right to the other commissioners? It does to me.
Yeah, it certainly does.
Yes.
And, and just as a side note, and I'm sorry to be workshopping this on the fly, but, James.
Yep.
If I can borrow your cursor for a moment. I know that this meeting room area
Yep.
is likely to be used regularly for building planning. We also are going to need a confidential meeting space area. If human services were to go in this area, we would need to look at another one of those. So I think we're looking at this area and this area down here. If this could be cut off into commissioner offices there, and then there's a small meeting area here, just because of the, how frequently we have the need for closed-door meetings with. just because of that how frequently we have um the need for closed-door meetings with state tracts.
Mike, you're doing what I asked you not to do, but yes, we can move doors.
James, um, I'm not sure how much more time you feel you need, but I wanted to check in with you. Is this presentation halfway through or we?
Uh, we are almost, we are, we have now gone through all the floor plans. Um, I will show you the exteriors just for fun, but um I believe we're ready to move on to what are the next steps. Uh, and then we can, then we can wrap this up unless we've got any uh further questions.
I have one floor plan question. I see a lot of conference spaces and small meeting spaces. And um, I again, not trying to workshop, but we don't have any of that right now. While we could use some, I'm just curious about the weighting of it. And I'm I'm sure there's a reason, and I just wonder if you could address it.
Absolutely. So uh, this has been a huge need uh from the towns side. Um, and uh for a, you know, collaboration and conferencing spaces. You'll also notice, Anne, that so one of the one of the nice things yet inefficient things about Miramonte is you've got all these large offices that you're able to take meetings in.
Yeah.
It will not be the case in this quote unquote right-sized scenario where your office, the general, you know, and again, these are industry standards, the um office sizes, but that's going to be a private office for one person um that, you know, could comfortably pull in one other chair for one other person. So uh, it is our belief that conferencing spaces, huddle rooms uh are going to be utilized necessary and needed um in this configuration. Does that answer your question?
It does. And the other thing I was noticing is it appears to be lots of sort of open floor fans, which means you also need a place for a quiet conversation. So I I just wanted to get that kind of on the record and.
Absolutely.
I have the language to answer questions about that myself. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Grayson, did you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, the connectivity between the two buildings was kind of posed as a, as a question, as I heard. And I just wanted to say that I'm very much in support of that. I think it's really important to create continuity between the buildings for county staff specifically and for county staff to be able to easily access those shared spaces, which are going to be a real amenity. Um, so I just wanted to say I'm really in support of that and hope that.
Great. We will continue to refine that and make sure that the connection points make as much sense as they can make. Okay, very briefly, um, on this side, you can see what went to Hark um at the work session. Um, and then the our the design team's responses to um to Hark feedback. Uh, if you don't mind, I'm going to go fairly quickly through some of these, you know, exterior exterior designs. But um, again, this is all, nothing approved, all proposed, um, and further refinement will will occur. Um, we intend to have another work session with Hark prior to submitting a a re quote unquote real application to get as much um constructive feedback as possible. Uh, again, updated building perspectives versus what was proposed. You can see how the the massing is set, you know, the third story massing has been set farther back. This is the view if you were standing across the street on the sidewalk uh in front of the Peterson building. This is how much of what you would see. Similar. Um, cost estimating and uh some, you know, floor plan breakdowns. I will note that these are unescalated costs um and estimates. Uh, you know, we're looking at approximately $10 million. That might feel a little bit low right now. Uh, and it will be because, you know, by the time we are ready to pull building permits, the inflation and escalations, which are accounted for in the um modeling, however, it's, I always find it easier to think in today's dollars. So um, that's, that's that number proposed there. Um. I believe that's all the slides I wanted to touch on. This is the complete phase three summary. Um, so next steps, town council direct, this was the, what you saw was the completion of what we were calling phase three. Town council has authorized staff and the consultants to proceed with phase four of the entirety of the um. Facilities master plan, uh, the pieces that are relevant to the county um would be. Sorry, I want to get to my staff report. So uh proceeding with design development drawings, uh getting a GMP guaranteed maximum price, uh finalizing a financing package, including seeking granting opportunities and securing all necessary entitlements, uh including uh subdivision and Hark approval uh for uh this for this proposed new build at uh 335 West Colorado. Uh, in addition to uh reconfirming our partnership uh through an additional MOU that would spell out what phase four collaboration looks like. We have completed, we are under a current MOU for phase three, which phase three has now been completed. So we would uh come back to you in the next couple of months on a proposed uh phase four MOU. And again, that is still not the point at which we would pull a trigger to say we are building a building. But um town council has directed staff to budget for in town council's budget, the entitlement phase of um the of the project. Um, and so that would be what we would be going to Hark um to get approvals, we'd be going to P and Z. Uh, we'd be figuring out how to pay for it and um. Getting firm pricing or from um contractors. Do you have any questions about next steps?
I do not. Commissioners?
Just um maybe a question about timing, James, what what if you, and we've had side conversations or I've talked to Mike about this, but what are you thinking realistically in terms of when the redevelopment might um begin and when it might end? Is that something you know yet?
I still believe that I I still believe that conversation is premature. Um, however, I will say it would be my goal to uh wrap up phase four, that would be the entitlements um in 2026. So that we would be prepared to say, yes, we move forward or no, we don't move forward uh in 2027.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, I say thank you, but you, the decision would be made in 2027? Or once phase four is completed, you would make that decision or together we would? And then you'd begin, we would potentially begin redevelopment in 2027?
Again, that will be up to BOCC and town council on when we decide to proceed. But I would like to have everything ready for the boards to make that decision by by the end of 2026.
Okay.
I don't hear or see any other questions from the commissioners or from the room. So James, we will thank you, and I believe that you have our seal of approval to continue as outlined.
Wonderful. Uh, thank you so much for the time. I apologize for going a little over, but I think it was time well spent.
I agree.
Cool.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Um, Commissioners, I propose that we recess for five minutes and return at 10:50. Is that all right? All right. Excellent. We'll see you in five.
Uh, you might be a little believing.
Do we want to just flip stars?
So we have, we could do stars now, move it's uh well, at 11:15 Sheriff Coles coming to give a.
That case, we will reopen our meeting when Carmen's pushed the button. Welcome back, everybody. It is 10:50 and we are reconvening. And we are moving on to item seven D. Excuse me, F as in Frank, which is a continued discussion on the potential ballot, on a potential ballot measure with Mike Bordonia, the county manager.
Thanks, Commissioners. Since I first approached you um a couple of weeks ago about the opportunity that we have with the upcoming November election to request uh ballot measures. Um, I've had some additional thoughts, and so I wanted to share my screen and share kind of what some of those um thoughts are. When I approached you initially, I was asking if you would be interested in um taking advantage of the new state law that allows other uses or additional uses for lodging tax dollars. Um, subsequent to that, uh was reflecting on the fact that we've heard consistently from our early childhood uh advisory panel as well as the mental health advisory panels that oversee those two respective county mill levies that they've been frustrated in the years where we have had to put down their mill levy to provide uh tax relief and or now with the new Senate bill that passed last year that will cap our um our revenue. And then I had one additional thought, fun, or fun thought. So this is more to just get your uh thoughts and reactions to three different potential ballot questions. Um, you could do all, none, any portion. Um, it is not going to be a significantly greater expense for the county to run uh additional ballot questions. We're given an estimate from our county clerk of approximately $7,000 as the county share um to put a question on the November ballot. But um, without further ado, here's what I initially approached you with, which is um under lodging tax, the House bill that passed uh this last session allowed counties to raise um their current lodging tax from 2%. Um, and I know that the smart district um took advantage of this as it pertains to their ballot question 3A. Um, it could allow you to go as high as 6%. And it allows these additional uses of those funds for public infrastructure maintenance, enhancing public safety for law enforcement, fire protection and emergency services, housing, childcare and tourism related. And under there, um, I didn't take, obviously, this is a very high level. It does allow for roads, especially roads that access uh recreation as well as have had impacts from tourism, which I think we could say is a majority of county roads. We've seen a sustained increase during the COVID pandemic that has continued. Um, and our survey results, which I'll share under manager matters uh briefly with you, uh corroborate that feedback. Um, it does not, um, it also does require that at least 10% of the lodging tax revenue collected must be dedicated to its historic purpose, which is advertising and marketing local tourism. Um, and so under no means are we saying that we want to recommend that you you run a question to wholesale reallocate these funds. But it would allow you to apportion pieces of them for additional purposes, whether it be roads, critical infrastructure, law enforcement, et cetera. So the ballot question consideration was to just, um, I heard from the commissioners that you did not, were not interested in potentially increasing the percentage collected on on short-term lodging. Um, short-term rentals, hotels, motels, um Airbnbs. Um, currently that amount fluctuates in the county between 80 and $100,000 a year annually. It is predominantly collected in the R1 district. Um, there are funds collected in R2 that are under $10,000 and those. So our collections in the R1 district, we've been giving entirely to the Telluride Tourism Board for marketing uh attractions and destinations within the Telluride Mountain Village region. In the RT region, it goes to Norwood um Chamber for the promotion of events and businesses in their community. There is a very small, but still um. exists collection in the R three district, which is the Egner Slick Rock area. And we have historically, because those are so infrequent and do not occur every year, we have, uh, the board has allocated those to different tourism things such as dark sky and or scenic byway tourism in those areas. Um, so the question is really, would you be interested in a ballot question that would allow for the discretion to be given to the county and to the tourism board for how those funds predominantly, the funds in the R one area could be used? Um. Sorry, I don't have a whole lot more than that. Um. I can tell you that the majority of counties um, around us and in the state are taking advantage of this opportunity to ask their voters. Um, there's about thirty percent of the counties that I surveyed that are uh, looking to increase their lodging tax so that they can continue their marketing activities, but then add additional funds for roads, infrastructure, law enforcement. Um, we know that, for instance, a rec ranger program due to federal cuts and and prohibitions was not able to occur this year, and that was a response directly to tourism that is in unincorporated county on our forests. Um, this, using these funds in this way could allow us to fund activities like that in the future, whether it be through the Forest Service or through the Sheriff's Office if we wished. So that is one that I think makes a lot of sense to at least give ourselves discretion if and when there is such a time when um, the marketing of the East End, you know, sometimes we hear about places that are loved to death. Um, and I know at times we've heard from our constituents, we don't want to see as much destination marketing, but we would like more education for our visitors. Um. This could be used for those purposes as well. Um. Again, many of our surrounding counties are going to be running this, uh, so we would not be alone or unusual in any respect. And so really my question, and and I can run through all three of these, and then we can come back to each one if you'd like, or we could deal with each one of these individually. Individually, the next two that I'll just tell you so you can answer that question are related to the E cap and M hap dedicated mill levies and then a road bridge mill levy and road bridge funding. And I know that we discussed, I'm sorry, you guys discussed last time. It is not a huge dollar amount. You know, I know that I heard concerns from some of the Commissioners to say that we don't want to turn off that spigot of funding to the tourism board that they rely on. But in comparison, when you think about our respective town partners, giving them seven to eight hundred thousand dollars respectively. Um, our contribution of the eighty thousand is not, um, while it is, I'm sure appreciated and important, it is not um, a large piece of their funding pie.
Commissioners, should we attempt to give Mike an answer on this first proposal, or should we wait and hear all three?
I'm happy to hear all three.
All right, we're gonna hold until we've got all the cards in front of us.
Very good. Um, and this is just a note for we're always taxing a year in arrears um, per county guy or statutory guidance. So our twenty twenty-six tax collections will be based on the twenty twenty-five valuation. Um, after abatements and reconciliations through the assessing process, um, our total county valuation for twenty twenty-five, which we would have been able to collect on in twenty twenty-six was one point five oh five billion. And there's the exact amount. That reflects a nineteen percent increase in total valuation from the twenty twenty-four value. But because of the legislation that passed in Senate Bill twenty-four dash two three three and subsequent measure during the interim session, that cap is, I had a typo there, sorry. It is five point two five maximum allowable increase in collection. Um, while that sounds maybe to uh, the general public as an appropriate amount of additional tax capture, I want to remind folks that our health insurance increase alone is over three hundred thirty thousand dollars this year. Oh, and let me put that in perspective. For that five point two five across all funds is approximately seven hundred thirty thousand dollars. That includes M hap, E cap, uh, capital fund, general fund and all of our other funds. That's the total amount and it is not fungible. So some of those could be are are allocated to specific ones. Within the general fund, we're talking a little over four hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue. We have twenty-six departments and offices in the county that receive their funding from the general fund. And when we think about the three hundred thirty thousand dollar healthcare increase cost, the recommendations from our wage study, which are currently recommended at approximately eight hundred thousand to bring us to market just in those two buckets alone, let alone software subscriptions, membership dues that are continuing to increase. We're going to be in a position where we cannot honor all those increases. So we're thinking of ways we've already, Jared has spent an immense amount of time with me sending them back over and over to run different scenarios and how we can be fair with our wage study, but also not honor um, the entirety of it because we can't afford it. To look at how we can apportion uh, healthcare costs of um, to our employees to share in that cost with us so that we can afford these things. But the reality is we need to find additional money if we want to continue uh, in the same direction trajectory that we have been. This will be likely our first year in the last six or more that will be having to go into reserves just to fund our county operations for twenty twenty-six. And um, you may be wondering how much, as of right now, we're looking to ask you to go approximately a half million into fund balance um, to fund county operations for next year. And we're gonna get a lot deeper into that and then a coming month and two months ahead. So I focused first on these two mill levies. Um, the voters approved this um, authorized the mental health and early childhood um, mill levies at a point seven five mils. That, when you read their question, it never considered the possibility that future legislation could cap that amount of property tax. Um, I know that we heard from both of those panels during the year that we provided property tax relief to residents. Um. That that was impacting their long-term agreements, grants and um, their operations long-term. The um, cap is applicable, I already said all that, sorry. So how much would it mean if they were allowed their full capture? They're currently um, on track, and I have it in the other workbook, which I can't bring up. They're currently on track to be able to capture forty-six thousand dollars additional uh, for next year for each of those funds respectively. If they were allowed to make their full capture, they would be able to capture approximately eighty-three thousand dollars more um, each. So that's one question. I know we haven't heard, but I also, we're realizing that many counties around the state, many of our special districts, and when I say many, I mean the majority, do not understand this revenue cap. And so there's going to be, we're luckily, we've been following this the whole time, and so it's not going to be a surprise for any of us, but for some of those panels that oversee these funds, I think it's gonna come as a surprise because they often will see our valuation and they're making their own calculation and and starting to make decisions based on how much revenue they think they're going to get. So. Um, the question, it could be run uh, individually for each of those funds if the Commissioners think that maybe the public feels differently regarding early childhood funding versus mental health funding. Um, or they could be run together. And then.
And Mike, before you go on, can you just say what it is that you're proposing in in section two? I I, what is it you're proposing?
I'm proposing that we ask the voters a question in one combined question that says you're in twenty seventeen, you initially authorized a, the full collection of point seven five mils for these two purposes. Because of new legislation, they will not be able to capture point seven five mils. They'll be in around the point six two um, range of mill collection. Would you like to authorize them to collect the full amount of point seven five mils? Which would allow them to capture approximately a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for next year each additional beyond what they already have.
I think, Anne, another way to say that is would you be willing to override the state legislature's five point two five percent cap? And continue course with what we as a community voted on previously and intended to have in perpetuity.
Correct. Well said.
Yes, thank you. That's I was just gonna say similar, stay in the course. Um, I think.
Okay, Mike, I'm just a little confused about the numbers and I'm sorry, I didn't read this. I'm just listening and right up. So you're saying with the cap, they'd be able to get forty-six. If it was a full capture, that would be an additional eighty-three for a total of an additional over last year of one twenty-five. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and I'm actually gonna share uh, a screen from our um, spreadsheet wizard, Jared Biggs, that shows, okay, um. Here's the amount for early childhood and mental health that they would have been able to capture under our new valuation. They would have been able to capture an additional hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars. Because of the new revenue cap, they will be allowed to collect forty-six thousand. And so the question is, do we want them to be able to capture the additional eighty-three thousand of what they would have received before the state legislative cap went into effect?
In a sense, I look upon this as debruising after the fact.
That's correct.
And I, just to start the conversation, I'm in favor of asking that question. I think that it makes some sense to split it, but I also think that it may be simpler just to stay the course on both of these previous decisions as opposed to reopening. Do you have um, mental health as a priority or childhood? They're both community priorities and in my mind, I think it makes more sense to keep them combined and simply focus on this is what we thought we were doing. Uh, the rug has been pulled out from underneath us a bit and we'd like to put the rug back in place.
I agree with that. Um, I think just for simplicity reasons, keeping it combined for the voter is it's just gonna be more straightforward and way they're tied, raising a young family here, mental health can be tied to early chi- childhood care and it's, I I think most people have a pretty equal share of um, at the for both those buckets.
The other rationale I had when I suggested uh, the thought of combining them, A, was it'll cost us a little less to put them as one question on the ballot. B, they passed in the same year um, with, oh, one year. One year difference, but with similar uh, percentages of approval by the voters.
That's helpful.
Yeah.
Commissioner Brown, are you following our logic and do you agree or disagree?
Yes, and yes, I I'm following and I agree.
Great. I think we have agreed on number two, even without hearing number three. But we'll hold that final decision. Let's try it.
But before we go there, while we have this spreadsheet open, I think this is a helpful um, one to understand, and I'll just focus your eyes on a couple of areas. Um, first, in the general fund, we're going to be able to capture three hundred eighty-one thousand. So I I overstated that previously. But in Road and Bridge, um, and so we're gonna be leaving uh, just under one point one million dollars um, of revenue that we cannot collect. We are not proposing that we ask the voters to allow us to collect that. Because that is the biggest of all tax, potential tax impacts. We're trying to be sensitive to the direction that we've received previously from the board of not increasing taxes unless it, unless, or asking voters to increase taxes unless we feel it is absolutely necessary. When we look at Rome Bridge, um, they're poised to be able to collect an additional one hundred uh, seventeen thousand. And even with that, they will be foregoing three hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars next year. And so that brings me into my last.
Can you send us that spread?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
And the memo as well, please.
For sure. So under Rome Bridge funding, this is a bit of an odd one, and it took me a few years to figure out why a Rome Bridge funding was the way it was. Um, the voters um, over two decades ago approved a point five mill levy to fund road maintenance and improvements. Subsequently, yes.
Share your screen.
Oh, sorry. I thought I was. Okay, good problem. Oh, Anne, let me make this bigger. Okay, that's a little better. Um, so the only road bridge mill levy that has been approved by our voters is a half of one mil. Um, we went to the voters uh, about ten years ago and asked, would you like to fund them at their existing maintenance levels? Or would you, and and there was um, a a raise to, it would have been to one point nine mils to maintain their existing levels? Or would you like to increase the level of service and maintenance on our roads by asking you to go higher? Both of those measures were defeated. They were not authorized. So we were found in this position where it was costing us one point nine mils annually to just fund an existing level of maintenance on all county roads. But we only had a half mil to fund it. So we've been taking an additional one point four mils from the general fund each year to make up that deficit. Because though of state statute that requires an apportionment to the towns of any road bridge mill levy, we've had to turn over approximately thirty-six percent of all funds that we collect in the road bridge mill levy and give it to our incorporated towns based on their populations. So. We also met recently and today was the first of the road in overall improvements that were increased uh, authorized with the ground pounders contract. We have a trajectory of if we can allocate approximately three hundred thousand dollars a year additionally to road bridge, we can not only maintain what we have, but we can start to chip away at improving our roads if we want to keep those gravel roads or dirt roads gravel and dirt surface. We had also discussed and will be meeting with Ryan at Roadbridge, um, what it would cost to pave certain sections of our higher use roads, indoor roads such as M forty-four that have a steepness that makes it almost impossible to maintain a surface without washboards. We did this with Overroad two years ago, and we've seen a dramatic improvement in um, the ability to maintain that road and keep it safe as well as we've seen our call volume of frustrated residents decrease precipitously. So this is, it's, I, this is all really a nebulous thing and I apologize for that. But the question, there's, there's so many questions behind this that go, what level of service are we trying to achieve for roads? We know that in the past two years, we've gotten an immense amount of frustration from our residents and visitors about the condition of our outline county roads, particularly our dirt roads. Um, I believe that if we continue to allocate a minimum of a dish, three hundred thousand dollars additionally each year, what we would have had, had we not been under this revenue limit, we could continue to use contractors like the ground pounders contract to improve to one to, depending on the length of it, one to three roads per year and bring them back up to a standard that will be easier to maintain long-term. Likewise, if we want to add additional funds, then we could look at, okay, we can pave one or two miles of road each year to, similar to the over road example, to increase the service level quality of our roads. So knowing that um, I was trying to find a way to increase road and bridge funding between three hundred thousand and six hundred thousand, the six hundred thousand is if we want to chip away at some of the paving uh, long-term, three hundred thousand is we want to just improve the dirt roads that we have. Three hundred thousand is we want to just improve the dirt roads that we have beyond what we're able to do with our. Twice a year grading and dust control applications. Um, the first one would be, would we want to request the voters to authorize the full capital of the re- revenue above the five point two five percent? And that would be approximately a three hundred twenty eight thousand dollar increase beyond. That hundred seventeen thousand that we're allowed to collect already. Yes.
I don't want to interrupt your flow, but I do notice that Sheriff Covalt has entered. The room and Dan, I'm guessing that you've got a lot to do today. Mike is in the middle of a tax uh proposal. Which is complicated and it's probably gonna take us another ten minutes to chew on. Would you like, Mike, to pause? And you give us the brief update that you are scheduled for at ten, eleven fifteen? Mike, do you think this is a ten minute?
It's up in ten minutes because all I'm looking for is what general direction so that next week I can come back to you? With draft language on each of these questions, remembering that our deadline is Friday. Uh, September fifth, that we will need to send these questions to the county park. So I've already heard confirmation of the E cap M hap still up for discussion is. Regarding the lodging tax and then this is the last thing. So here's a few different directions that I'm suggesting you might consider getting. The first is to ask the voters to allow full capture of your current um Roman Bridge funds. And to do this, there's a little bit of machination because. Um, we're capturing one point nine mils. I don't think we need to increase the overall number of mils to achieve our financial goal. But I would also like to clean up and memorialize that we would add one point four mils to the Rome Bridge Fund. And we would eliminate one point four mils from the general fund collection that we currently have. So the voters would still be at the same total amount of mils. We would just be act uh allow, asking them to capture the actual value that is created from those one point nine mils. The second one is, would you wish to increase that by two additional tenths of a mil? Um, that would allow us an additional three hundred thousand dollars uh beyond that. So this would be the scenario where we could be paving. The first scenario is we can improve our gravel roads. We can engage in this external contractor to. Um, use to improve the surface. The second question is, we do that and we can pave one to two miles of road per year, increasing the overall service level. And then the third was, a- and I, I still, I put not recommended, I considered just deleting this, but. I thought I didn't cre- throw it in there anyway. I think that there is likely to be some confusion of people that look at their tax bill and go, wait, you're already charging one point nine mils. And you're asking me to go from a half mil to one mil, but essentially I'm asking for an additional half mil and then we would still have to backfill. I don't like that. Um, and so, but I did want to throw it out. That would result in the highest amount of increase. Um, it would also be a tax increase. It would also still require us to do that back, behind the scenes machination of backfilling with general or other capital funds wherever we can legally do so. And then the last thought was, was my original one, which was running all three of these as one question. Um, but I think the nuance of the Roman Bridge one. To say we're gonna forego it here and add it here would create a complicat- or confusion for the general public. And they may feel differently about roads versus mental health and early childhood care and I wouldn't want to see. These all three go down because it's per som in the question. Uh, but that's where I originally started. I don't recommend that issue third. What I'm recommending is that you consider either you ask for the full capture. Um, a- and or you uh, and we would eliminate. Where we've been backfilling those one point four mils from the general fund so that the public knows their overall mill levy is not increasing. Or the se-
Mike, I've, I have a question. Um, uh, and not to be cheap or not follow the laws or anything in regards to transferring money to the towns, but. Um, currently, if we are actually funding Roden Bridge one point nine mils, are we required to give thirty six percent of that one point nine mils? To the towns or just thirty six percent of the actual Roden Bridge Mill Levy of point five?
Whatever we certifies our Roden Bridge Mill Levy, thirty six percent of that is given to the towns. So say that we are, we are open um, opening ourselves up by trying to do this the creative way. We, we did it when we wanted to reduce taxes. Um, we went back closer to our point five mil and backfilled less and that meant less apportionment to the towns. Um, we didn't hear about that from them year one. Year two, we started getting questions of, wait, why are we receiving less revenue? We explained technically, we only have point five of a Roman Bridge Mill Levy. So. I would like to, so this is.
All right, Mike, Mike, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, I, okay, what, the first, your first part of your answer was. We are only required to give them thirty six percent of whatever the mill levy is for the Roden Bridge, which is.
Correct.
Point five, but even when we backfill that. We still have to give them thirty six percent or no?
Yes, when we have certified one point nine mils as the road bridge levy and just foregone it in the general fund, thirty six percent of that goes to the towns.
And is it required to certify the full one point nine? We can't just certify point five and then. Transfer the one point five from the general fund to the Roden Bridge? I'm not trying to be tricky at all, but I'm just curious about, it does seem like if we are gonna be asking the um. The, the voters to increase anything, that the fact that we're foregoing a third of that is, is uh, is, is concerning when it's.
I would, I would love to have a one-on-one conversation with you after the meeting to get into. The, a little bit of the nuance of that because I think it's gonna get us into the weeds right now.
Okay.
I hear your question and I can answer that. I'd just like offline if we could.
Thanks, yep.
So commissioners, unless any of you have uh appetite for number three. Which is not currently in front of us because it's off the page, but also because it was not recommended. It was more of an idle daydream. Um, I would recommend that we focus on one or two. As the primary places to discuss. Is that all right?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown, great. With that, do either of you feel strongly about number one or number two? Commissioner Brown, would you like to start?
No, no. I uh, I mean, I can see the benefits of both of them. Um, you know, I've argued for three or four year, however long I've been here. Um, for not raising taxes and so I would, for that reason, tend to number one. Because it doesn't ask for additional mils and at the same time, we're hearing so much. From um the public of with concerns about the roads. Um, and I like the idea of having enough money to pave some of these trickiest sections. So for that reason, I, I'm interested in number two.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is that the um two tenths of a mil difference is a concern to you.
Well, i- it's not as much a concern to me because I understand the value of collecting that amount of money. And I also understand proportionally what that entails. It's not, you know, millions of dollars. My concern is putting anything in front of the voters that discusses a tax. Increase over and above current mill levies. Um, and I don't, you know, I know we hear so much from people who live on these roads about the issues, but I don't know. Um, how people who don't live on the roads feel about it. And my concern is that those, there are more people who don't live on the roads and if we only put number two in front of them, we might have a. Less of a chance to, to get it passed.
Understood. Micah saw your hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to share, I was gonna go through the uh community survey of which we received sixty five answers from. Um, but at the end of that survey, it asked, are there any things, any services that you would be willing to increase taxes for? Um, and the number one answer was roads. Was uh, it was yes, if it was for roads, which I found interesting out of all county services listed.
And how many responses indicated that preference? Out of sixty five, was that unanimous? Was that over half?
Um, hold on, this question. Yeah.
Oh, admittedly.
Was, no, it was not more than half.
Okay, admittedly sixty five respondents is a small portion of our general population, but it's data we do have.
Ahead of wildfire mitigation or workforce, workforce housing, those were the next two.
Well, that is interesting news.
It's not that surprising to me considering the amount of interaction I've had with constituents about. Roads in the last several months. I know that is. Not uncommon, but and it might also be indicative of the district I represent, but I've been hearing it. Readily. Um, and so that doesn't surprise me that, that response.
And if you were to incorporate that response and the information you've been receiving from your constituents, do you have a preference between one and two?
Um, yes, I. I, I think that. Collecting, asking for an increase in mils makes sense at this point to. Increase our funding to be able to actually start ticking away at the road maintenance and improvements that need to be done. So.
One other benefit, if, because I, when I think of where the majority of voters live. The majority of all county voters live in the town of Telluride Mountain Village. Those voters will also be seeing an increase in their funding for their town roads. So this is a value add to them. It's not just on incorporated county people.
Do you feel within the whatever two hundred words that are allowed for ballot language that that would be able to be expressed in the ballot language clearly?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I don't know.
That's important.
I think we can, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown, in response to your concern about um any tax increase and your. I think valid worry that were we to go with number two, that we might not get anywhere. I'm curious if it's possible to write a ballot question that is an if then statement. Where we request number two, but if number two is voted down, number one is also. On the list of possibilities and maybe that's two questions, but they're related. Um, it seems like we have this dire need to keep road and bridge afloat. But we'd like to actually raise the. Level of the water and I agree with you, Anne, that I don't want to risk um losing. What we have been gathering and I look at number one really as a extension of our previous discussion about N cap and E cap.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I feel like we could. Somebody could paint all of those in the same color and it would make sense to most people. Because we'd explain that the state changed the rules, but the voters have already spoken on this in our county and we'd just like to stay the course. Um, but it does indicate to me a s- even a point two mil is a, a different kettle of fish. And I don't know enough about how to. Accomplish my goal, which would be to make sure that we. Put everything in one bucket for, we want to stay the course and then have a side question or a separate question. And could we increase it because of the pressures that we've been experiencing, Jared?
I, I was gonna mention um, that is possible, Commissioner Waring. It was how the nineteen ninety eight question that gained us a half a mil in Roden Bridge was actually posed. Because they posed it in a way where they said, would you like a half a mil? Or ideally, would you like one and a half mils? And um, the, the populace said, we like that lesser amount. Um, you know, we, it does set up that dynamic. Um, and then we would obviously, if both of those questions failed, we would be left exactly where we are today. So that, that's something that we can definitely work on crafting um and bring back to the board as, as desired.
Commissioners, I am in favor of asking our staff to do exactly that.
I think that's a really creative solution and I, I support that.
Me too. Likewise, good one, Lance.
Thanks, Anne. We're in agreement on number three. We'll circle back to number one briefly.
Yes.
That's the lodging tax question, which we were going to simply ask for more discretion. And the option to expand our funding contributions to uh fire, law enforcement, housing and roads. Uh, along with some others, but those were the big, big ones I picked up. But we're not uh making any commitments to do so. Commissioners, how do you feel about expanding the, the playing field there?
I have a question. Oh, sorry, let, Galina, please.
Go for it, Anne.
Um, is this something that we could do at a later date or is it now or never?
No, you, we could do this at any point in the future.
Yeah, I think that because I cared so much about the other measures and I feel like we're gonna have our work cut out for us. Explaining those and um, you know, sharing information about those, I would rather not. Sort of clutter the airwaves, if you will, with this one. Uh, with option number one, because it, it really doesn't help us that much at this point. Um, I also don't, I think with the concerns about. Uh, sales tax flattening out, even dipping, any kind of suggestion that we might be pulling back on marketing, whether it's. You know, drawing people or educating people once they're here. I just don't think it's the right time for that. Um, so this to me is not a priority and I think it might. Might sort of clutter the airwaves and diminish the possibility of getting the other initiatives passed.
Mike?
I would only confirm your thought, Commissioner Brown. There is valid data to show voter fatigue when there are. Too many questions on a ballot that people more often start voting no, rather than, so if, if. I don't mean to speak for you, but I, I think that's a valid point you raise.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you bringing that up, Anne, and before options. Two and three were brought before us, I was certainly in support of this. As a ballot measure um to give any sort of increase and to fund these really critical. Um, areas of oversight of the county, but uh, I, I agree. I think that the more that is on the ballot. That the voter fa- voter fatigue is a thing and I, I think prioritizing. Making those o- other programs and um services whole is, should be our priority right now.
Let's streamline the ballot with uh focus on the number two and number three questions with the two step and number three.
Very good. And did I hear you correctly that you were interested? I heard Commissioner Waring uh say he was interested in combining the. The two M hap, E cap. Was there support from the other board members on that?
Yes.
Yes, Anne, Galina?
M hap, E cap and Roden Bridge?
No, E cap and M hap.
That's one question, then Rome Bridge. So we're looking at potentially three questions, two for Rome Bridge, one for the M hap.
Correct.
Correct.
Beautiful. We'll bring you um follow-up information and some sample questions next week.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Brown, we have Sheriff Covalt in the room with us and we are about to receive a. Fire update as well as a brief update, I believe, on the uh Rainbow Gathering.
Ready.
From Sheriff Covalt. Hello.
Hey, everybody.
Hi.
Sheriff.
Well, this is a lot less nerve wracking than the last time I sat in this show.
For all of us.
Yeah. Uh, we'll start with fires. Uh, I'm gonna mention again the Lee fire. Uh, and the reason I mentioned this, even though it doesn't directly affect us, it indirectly affects us. In the fact that the Lee fire is gaining ground again today. And there are some local and federal resources that are being diverted to that as it makes its move towards rifle and I seventy. We are not in peril as far as resources go. We still have plenty of resources in the area and in county, both federal and regional. Uh, state uh DFPC, uh BLM Forest Service, our local firefighters were pretty solid. That being said, jump over to the Stoner fire. Stoner gained almost a thousand acres yesterday. Watching heat indexes today, I'm gonna say they're gonna gain at least another thousand today. But terrain and weather are working in their favor. So it has pushed the fire. To the westward. to the westward side now and a little bit more south. Fuel loads are changing up there and it's moving out of the conifer into young Aspen growth, which is a huge benefit to our firefighters. The young Aspen growths don't burn as hot or as fast as the conifer forests do. And so this change in terrain and change in fuel is going to be a big benefit to them. We this morning have been uh working, I have been working with Sheriff Don Wilson from Dolores County. Our emergency managers are in contact with theirs. Should for some reason that fire change direction and actually make it over the mountain towards Rico? There's two scenarios that take place. If it comes in on the south side of Rico, they're gonna have to evacuate to the north to us. If it comes in on the north side, they're gonna have to evacuate to the south. So we're dynamically building two separate sets of plans right now. I have not had the opportunity to reach out to Mike today or to uh Parks and Rec. But what I'm gonna be requesting is the use of Down Valley Park. So it looks like out of the two hundred some residents that are in the Rico area, there will be approximately fifty to sixty that if unhoused will not have anywhere to go. Dolores County has assets available. They have these um big army tents that there, these are these big inflatable surgical tents and things. They house twenty five to thirty people. Uh, they've got their other resources of cots and things. What they don't have is a place to put it. And so I would like to uh get with Mike, get with Parks and Rec and set Down Valley Park as our primary. And then get with uh Lawson Hill and set the soccer fields as our secondary. So that that's our game plan at this point, and logistics are still being worked out there. I am not a fire expert, but I've fought a lot of fires or been on a lot. There's never an unpossibility, but it is kind of unrealistic that this event will ever happen. There is a lot of perfect storm factors that really have to come into play in order for that fire to climb over that mountain and get into Egnor. What's that?
Rico.
Or I mean Rico, thank you, I apologize, into into Rico. Uh, so that's kind of it on fires right now, just kind of a brief overview of where we sit. So questions on that?
Yes, sir. Uh, regarding the, I'll call it the Rico Fire. I think it's got another name, Stoner. Yeah. Is there an equal improbability of highway closure on one forty five, or is that more likely than the town of?
That depends on fire direction. At this moment in time, with the current weather, wind directions and fire growth, I would say improbable. Let's say tomorrow the winds start coming strong out of the southwest, that's gonna change that. But on the current weather forecast, the current fire dynamics and terrain, I would say today is improbable.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions regarding fire for Sheriff Covalt?
No.
I would also add that if anyone is interested on Facebook, Rico did their fire update, recorded it and posted it. It's a forty one minute long video and it goes through each of the dynamic elements of the fire through Dolores County stance, Monizuma County stance, BLM Forest Service. Each one of their speakers uh can provide more detailed information than what I've given you.
Thank you, Mike.
The only question I had was commissioners, do you have any concern about working with Sheriff Covalt um on the use of Down Valley Park if it can accommodate that type of use?
No, I think that's a great solution, um especially utilizing Dolores County's pen resources.
So the advantage to Down Valley Park right off the bat is we don't have to immediately place porta potties. We have a bathroom. We have potable water there, so we don't need to immediately bring in a potable water truck. We have technically a cook kitchen area under that picnic awning area, so it it serves a lot of purposes in one location.
I would just wanna make sure if we go in that direction, we'll keep you apprised and we're gonna be probably putting up notices discouraging the public's use of the park during that time because of the potential of competing needs.
Could we act, could we actually close that park to the public, Mike, if people are living there? Yeah.
I don't know if I'd get real hasty on that because of our current situation. We are pre-planning our pre-plan on the event that something does happen.
Appreciate that. Um, I haven't heard any opposition to the pre-plan. And I think that we would prefer to work with existing county property than uh prioritize Lawson Hill. That feels to me like that's gonna be the overflow or emergency backup if somehow there's more people that need space.
Yeah, and I would agree. And I really, and it doesn't have the resources that Down Valley has. So Down Valley, after we did some kicking around last night, seemed to make, our our initial thought yesterday when we discussed this was the soccer fields uh at Lawson. The more I thought about it last night, the more unrealistic that became. And so this morning we settled on Down Valley.
Well, let's do this, Dan. Let's agree that Down Valley is our top priority, but let's go ahead and have the initial conversation at least with Lawson Hill homeowners so that uh if there is need this event or in future, at least we've broached the topic with them and gotten a a sense of what it would take and what their expectations would be if we had to have um two sites.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
So uh Shannon Armstrong is going to be reaching out to them today at some point. I kind of loaded her plate this morning, so I don't have a good timeframe on when that's gonna happen.
That's a conversation with they being Lawson?
I don't know who she's going to contact.
Okay, well, you've got the first priority for the pre-plan. I think established through the commissioners and staff will work with you to execute any kind of closures or additional.
I appreciate that.
Prep that needs to be made.
That will be very, very beneficial.
Okay, first item.
Our fire peninsula. Extremely fast response on that, mostly because we had a private citizen that was in the area on horseback who was able to call it in rather quickly. And I will say, it is probably the first time in my career I've ever seen the firefighters beat the cops there. So that was, they were, they were there quick, fast and in a hurry. And uh even though we didn't call a containment until late Saturday afternoon, we were pretty comfortable at dark on Friday that it wasn't going anywhere. So DFPC, BLM, Forest Service, Norwood Fire, uh Telfire, uh a hand crew out of Idaho, I believe, uh they they knocked it out quick. So the it could have been a lot worse than it was, especially since we had sustained thirty mile an hour winds that were not working in our favor in the beginning. But then somebody decided to change the wind direction for us and that helped a bunch.
Do we know what started that fire, Dan?
Lightning. So the fire investigator was able to determine the location. What it looks like is approximately seven days prior to the fire at exactly the spot where he found a lightning strike tree and Tyra had a lightning strike clouded ground. So without the official report in my hand, I'm just gonna go off the scuttlebutt from scene. It looks like lightning struck this dead tree. This dead tree began to smolder on the inside, continued to generate heat until it finally fell over, spread ash, ash set the fire off. That's how we got our fire.
Act of God.
Yes, act of God.
Force majeure. Okay.
Okay. Uh, anything else on fires, folks?
I just wanted to call out on Friday evening Sheriff uh Covalt and I were um frantically calling around, thanks to Carmen and others, uh Ramona for uh connecting us with various contractors, because they thought we were gonna have to get a bulldozer in there to cut line around that fire. And um of all the folks we called, you know, we had a lot of great response from various local contractors saying, yes, I'll go and get this piece of equipment. I'll get it there. When it came down to who could respond the most quickly, Ray Cozy um responded. And so I would just wanted to give him a public kudos for his willingness to help uh his community and and keep us safe. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Cozy dropped everything he was doing and made a run for his equipment and so.
Thank you, Mr. Cozy, and thank you, Mike and Carmen, working after hours on a Friday.
Carmen, I didn't know you were involved, so thank you.
There's very little that happens here where Carmen isn't involved.
Okay, now let's move on real quick to Rainbow folks. Uh, it has been a blessing in disguise. We are not seeing any of the issues from their visit in two thousand sixteen. We had over a thousand people here at that event. We're at about sixty to seventy people right now, total. Uh, the four people, if you will, the front people for the organization have been very gracious and in contact with Forest Service, not only the district manager, but Forest Service LEO, Mr. Layton. And they are abiding by fire regulations. Uh, they are keeping their footprints small. They're staying out of the meadows and into the tree area, so as not to impact the grazing grounds for our local ranchers. We have had no issues at any of our local businesses that have been brought to our attention. So this gathering of the Rainbow Culture has been far better than our last experience with them. So.
That's a great relief. Thank you. Um, commissioners, any questions regarding the Rainbow Gathering? Sheriff Covalt, appreciate the updates and uh I know that you've probably got other fish to fry. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. We'll talk soon.
That brings us with that unexpected but uh batch of good news to uh item eight A, which is an update with our Natural Resources and Climate Resilience Director Star Jamison, and I know that she has one item to consider, which is signature on a contract with Win Marion Barber LLC for EV charger installation at four county facilities. We have a lot of information in our packet about this. And uh Star, thank you for providing reloading, if you will, front loading. Um, that was really helpful to get a sense of where what we're gonna be discussing.
Absolutely, um. Having reviewed the um contracts, the addition to that contract was a bonding measure of four thousand dollars. Um, also, we had um because the company wanted to do a site visit first because they haven't actually come to the site to make a proper bid on the project. They um they're coming on Tuesday. And so we've included language. Thank you, Jared Biggs and Maura Pae for helping um create language to um be able to alter that number um for the contract to bring it down. Um, because um some of the sites, they haven't appropriately, they've put um bollards in place where they're not needed. And so there's just additional things that they added in the contract. Having not been here, it was an estimate, and I'm sorry, the smoke is like really bothering me. Um, so they're gonna do a site visit, uh and I'll be with them on Tuesday. And then um if these numbers change, then we'll be able to go in into um create the, it it will be lower than this. It will not exceed. So do you all have any questions for?
I think what I heard you say, Star, is that we could consider the hundred and forty thousand, four forty eight and seventy four cents as a not to exceed cap. But we should anticipate after next Tuesday that the number might be somewhat lower. With that knowledge, do you need us to authorize this contract as it reads with the inclusion of not to exceed language, or is that already included in the language well enough that if they come back with a smaller number? We can still proceed. Is it important, in other words, to get this done today, or do you want to wait until after next Tuesday and do it with a more firm number?
Um, ideally, they wanted this contract signed before they come here on Tuesday.
If we could add the language in item number uh four, term of agreement, uh second line.
It does actually, if you look in three.
Uh huh, maximum contract expenditure?
Yeah.
That's pretty much saying what I think we are saying, which is this is a not to exceed and we come in less than we're happy. So with that knowledge and having read the rest of the agreement, I don't have any other questions or concerns and would be willing to sign that. Commissioners, how do you feel?
I feel.
We got a good and a similar, so I think, Star, you've got authorization to proceed.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us?
Um, I uh wanted to share a uh CC four CA um email that we received. Um, let's see here. Um, on a topic I had previously um spoke to for the EPA proposal to repeal the end um engagement finding for vehicle emission rules. Here, we have a summary of what that is. Um, I would like to write comments that are due on September fifteenth. Also, if commissioners um are interested, they can testify for that. Um, we would need to know by August twelfth um as a testimony. Um, and the comments are due on the fifteenth.
Okay, August twelfth was yesterday, so.
Or sorry.
We're gonna have a hard time with that, but um I was in contact with CC four CA staff about this. And the two dates for testimony, one is August twentieth, which apparently is going to be a fairly lengthy commissioners meeting. The other option is August twenty first, which wasn't possible for me. Um, if other commissioners wanted to jump on board, I'm happy to share contact information with CC four CA. And you could consider testifying in front of the EPA. Otherwise, I'm quite content with your offer, Star, to write comments, which are due much later. And based on what the EPA's website is showing, um, the decision from their perspective is uh wise and not a, not a done deal, but uh it's the direction they've been instructed to head. So I'm not unfortunately, of the belief that much of what we say is gonna change anyone's ideas, but it will make us feel better, so we should try.
All right, great. Yeah, I appreciate your willingness to to write the letter, whether it does or does not have ultimate effect. I think raising our voice in opposition to this is really important.
Agreed.
I I have meetings on the twenty first. Maybe Anne could weigh in if she's interested in testifying, but I'm very much in support of you writing that letter. Commenting.
Commissioner Brown, before you speak, I know your inclination to say yes, and in this instance, after talking with CC four CA lead staff, um, they got, they took us off the hook, so.
That's fine. I've always said to CC four CA, if you're not available and they feel like they need our voice, I'd be um happy to weigh in, but it sounds like they have enough support and that's fine.
Great.
And thank you for the letter as well.
All right, Star, we are in agreement there.
Great. I just listed some things to add in the letter here. Um, basically the pollution risk, taking out science, um wildfire, all the natural disasters, et cetera.
Everything you say is true, and we'll see the letter and run it through our editorial process well before the fifteenth.
Great.
Thank you.
Um, additional, um, with our Spender comments, um, the G-Mag decided to, um they have not, they have decided not to move forward with the East Beaver Timber Project. Um, so those comments that we made, um, they are not moving forward with that project.
That's a win.
Um, just a another reminder about the commuter challenge that we're doing here for the month of August. We also have an e-bike finance program that we're doing here at the county. Um, so last week I worked with the Forest Service and Parks and Open Space to coordinate porta potties at Alta Lakes. Um, I'm gonna join the green grants application review committee. Um, and then just doing some more research, talking to the Forest Service last week about the air curtain burners um and their concerns. Um, I, I at this point would like to talk to Montrose Fire and I assume I know why they're not um responding at this time. Um, based on uh Megan Eno's response, she doesn't want to deter us from doing um this project or applying for the grant and purchasing this. Um, this is the information I have at this time, though, that I feel a major um issue would be staffing. Um, and a piece of equipment like this needs to be uh managed twenty four hours for uh heating up and cooling down. Uh, they currently don't have the staff capacity to do that at this time. They don't offer overtime. Um, also, um, it requires for larger scale projects, um chippers, because it needs to be broken down and that creates more bang for your buck for your uh air curtain burner. Um, also, it needs water and it needs an excavator as. Um, also, it needs water and it needs an excavator at site to pull the materials to put in here on those larger projects. Um, so additionally, what I did find out from uh, contacting the grant. Um, the state with the grant is that this is going to be offered through twenty thirty. Um, also with this um, grant, they offer projects such as wildfire mitigation projects you can apply for as well. Um, I uh, also asked Megan what she thought about this um, suffer project and potentially using. Um, Montrose air curtain burner that they got in their grant um, as a co-county, uh, cooperative county project. Um, so that's what I wanted to talk to Scott at the Montrose County Fire about. And so once he gets back to me, then that might be a possibility that we could look at theirs. Um, we have some time for a grant and maybe do a pilot with that project because I believe what I've been told is that they're gonna use the. Um, their road and bridge staff for that, and that's how they applied for the grant. I had a few questions about what grant they applied for and what staff specifically, um, and what counties that they anticipated. Um, cooperating with, I'm sure they had to include that in the grant, so. That's where I'm at with that. If you guys have any questions.
I'm thinking that what you were recommending is to hold on uh, application. A grant application for us to acquire one at this point. And to see if we can join forces with Montrose County, perhaps use that experience as a pilot. Understand a little better about the efficacy of the air curtain burner and iron out any kinks before we end up. Uh, winning the grant and getting one delivered and scrambling to place it and use it. Is that a fair summary?
That would be picked up as well.
Let's do that.
Yeah, that, that makes so much sense. Thanks for doing, getting those questions answered. Um. I specifically asked Star to engage with the Forest Service to see what, what their reluctance was to purchase. An air curtain burner. It made sense to me that they might have one in their possession, uh, but that's a lot, a lot of clarity. Thank you.
Right, that's all I have.
Question.
Yes.
Why are the porta potties necessary at Alta Lakes? Does that have anything to do with staffing cuts or that's?
Contracts. Their contracts. They weren't able to, to get their contracts through the federal government.
I think what Star said was we were backing up uh, some failed contract obligations at the federal level. And because we have uh. A backyard that um, is suitable for camping at Alta Lakes and a lot of people really enjoy that, that we decided. That we'd spend our own resources to take care of the problem.
We also used the savings from our rec rangers since we weren't able to get those folks. We had that money already in the budget. And so um, Star refreshed me at that idea and I thought it was a good one to just keep it from people using um. All around the lakes as their bathrooms.
And you ran that by us a couple of meetings ago, I recall.
No, well, I just stated that there was the possibility that if they could not um, continue with their, if they would not get funding for their contracts. Um, which all their contracts were put on hold um, through the Doge analysis. Um, and when I spoke to Megan, she said, um, it would be much easier if we would just get porta potties there. Um, and. Um, opposed to her trying to contact the Washington office and close a campsite. So.
Excellent.
And the closure would be due to the safety concerns of the public because of the amount of waste that would be in the area.
That's great.
I think you solved the problem neatly. Thank you.
That's great. And is that road open again?
Yes.
Yes.
Good news. Okay, thank you, Star.
Great. Anything else?
Um, I believe we are all set. Appreciate your time. Thanks for your patience while we. Finished the other conversations we needed to have.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, on to item nine, manager matters. Mike Fordonia.
Okay. Hello again, commissioners. Um, I wanted to let you know, I know this was circulated around, we received the CSU Extension Survey. I went ahead and completed that up at the county. Um, thanks to the public for obliging us last Thursday while we shut down county offices for our annual. County employee picnic at Down Valley Park. It was excellent. We found out some of us um, are very strong kickball players, including Commissioner Waring. Um, and that flip flops are the pair of choice. Um, Tom Boyer Red Pair got an update this morning. All of our contractors, Earth Tech and Nico Services are on site. Um, they, Earth Tech has been removing debris above the falls as well as in the road. And hammering on the rock, Nico is commencing drilling as we speak. And um, so far, the, the rock is showing it, the same integrity as the geotechnical investigation. That we had done in the fall on it, so we're optimistic that we will be on schedule for a completion before Labor Day weekend. But again, um, we don't wanna guarantee that until we get a little bit closer to that time. Next Tuesday, we'll be holding the commissioners, actually, I'm sorry, let's go back. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of attending the Chauvinian Conservation District Lunch. Uh, I wasn't able to stay for the board meeting, but uh, I know Commissioner Gleason and Jamie Cass with Parks and Open Space, Chris Hazen, who's um. Uh, main contractor for the PES program were there and numerous landowners participating in various Chauvinian programs were there. One of the things that I really enjoyed learning about was a new application that um. Uh, Steve Hale, uh, the director of Chauvin now has developed after learning from a conference. Um, and it's basically this liquid that they can generate out of waste, um, wastes. Uh, not just weeds and other weed products that can turn it into a fertilizer that requires less moisture for plants. Um, to grow as well as makes the, the soil more uh, drought tolerant. So that's an exciting one that we're looking to um, see expanded. I know that he's already engaged in some uh. Test plots up on Deep Creek Mesa, and we're looking to see if it proves the same results as it has if. Uh, his farm and other farms in Montrose. Commissioner Retreat, um, next Tuesday, all day, um, we'll be meeting with commissioners, um, managers and attorney. To update our two-year goals, um, and we're looking forward to that. Patrick Ryan and Ellie, our regional dollar rep will be facilitating that meeting for us. And Jared and I um, met with him yesterday to just confirm his objectives and the uh, the agenda for that.
And Mike, that's a nine to five block guy?
Four.
Nine to four, thank you.
And where are we held, holding that meeting?
We're gonna be at the library, yeah.
So just for clarification, for some reason I had.
We originally had the nineteenth and the twenty-first, and then because of Patrick was unavailable on the twenty-first. Um, we chose to just go on the nineteenth, and then if we need to do a subsequent follow-up, we can do so without Patrick. Um, on the twenty-first.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
Sure. This Thursday, uh, from one thirty to four will be the Gunnison Valley Transportation Planning Region Meeting. I plan on attending. Where we'll be discussing the region five, RC dot regions ten-year uh, priority project review. And trying to confirm that plan for the next ten years of program funding from C-Dot. So I know that's something Commissioner Waring and I attend, and I will be there. Um, to make sure that the priorities we've already discussed in previous meetings are carried forward. Um, at our Wednesday, next Wednesday, August twentieth, our regular commissioner meeting. So far, some of the high topics, uh, high-level topics on that meeting are the continued discussion on county deed restrictions. And what we may wish to do, uh, as far as offerings to folks that are on various forms of. Unincorporated county deed restrictions. Um, and know that this priorities for the uh, C-CAP. Uh, Colorado Counties Acting Together will be discussed as well as the follow-up from our ballot questions. Um, discussion today will be revisiting next Wednesday. And beyond that, the only other thing I had to share with you was our, some of the high-level results from our survey. If you are interested in obliging me, what I plan to do, because so many of the answers were individual answers. Um, I wasn't planning on going through each question sixty-five different answers. Uh, but I will print those out and distribute those to each of the commissioners individually this afternoon so that you have those. And Commissioner Brown, I'll email those to you so that you can see those in advance of your retreat. Um, but if you'd like to see a look of what we receive. So of genders, uh, predominantly more responses from our female respondents than male. Few preferring not to say, few saying other. As far as ethnicities, um, majority are identified as white. Or prefer not to answer, but I was happy to see that we had at least some level of representation from various other ethnicities. Uh, of residents within the county. And where they're coming, where they responded, that they live from, uh, Telluride, um, led the, the list. As well as other areas in the east end of San Miguel County, um, then Mountain Village, Plasterville. Uh, and I take that back, Norwood was the second highest. But pretty good broad representation, even though there weren't a lot, I would hope for a greater number of respondents. Um, and I'd suggest that we continue to do this annually so that we can kind of look and see if we can bolster our responses, but also see what trends. May change over time. And as far as full-time or part-time residents, uh, the majority of respondents, or ninety-plus percent were full-time. Few part-timers. Um, the majority own their homes, about eighty-five percent versus um, about fifteen percent of renters. In household income, I was pleasantly surprised. Um, I thought that we would see a majority saying they preferred not to say. But the majority did uh, equate their income level and um, I was a little bit surprised at. The number of the higher income levels, um, significant, the majority of respondents over the hundred thousand dollar annual income. But still a pretty good broad representation from folks that have a lower household income. How long they've lived in the county, the majority responding, about sixty-five percent over fifteen years. And you can see uh, less as it goes down in their duration of time lived in the county. As far as their overall impression, um, I was heartened to see this. Uh, nice bell corp, bell curve of small amount that are very satisfied, the majority satisfied overall in county services and operations. Um, followed by um, those that weren't feeling either way. Significant number of dissatisfied and then a smaller amount of very dissatisfied and no opinion. Um, we're talking two responses in each of those categories. Um, those, I'm not, I'll print these portions out, um, for as far as. Um, why did they rate questioning that way? What are the commissioners doing well? What are they not doing well? Um, I did like this one, although unfortunately, this is an extremely long graph, so you can't. See, it's hard to view in this way, but as far as how satisfied, um, I think. Didn't come as much surprise, surprise, the most satisfaction occurring uh, with our search and rescue. And then just so you can see the key at the bottom of this, before you start looking at all these, and maybe we won't even bother with these. But um, Green was very satisfied, followed by satisfied, then neither satisfied nor dissatisfied. Then at the bottom of each of these pies was the dissatisfied, very dissatisfied or no opinion. So that bottom, um, a lot of folks, obviously, who are not veterans, didn't have an opinion on that. Um. I was just looking through to see where we had strong feelings on either way, you know, Rome Bridge, we had us almost equal portions of satisfied and dissatisfied. As well as those very happy and very unhappy. Um, fairgrounds more on the happy side, mapping GIS, um, majority happy with many having no opinion. CSU Extension, again, I think those that don't participate in those programs, many folks had no opinion, but those that did were quite satisfied. Admin department, um, you can see kind of that graph of more satisfied or not caring than dissatisfied. Natural resources, a lot more folks happy or no opinion, and then a lot saying, you know, they didn't have an opinion. Treasurer's Office, um, pleased to see folks predominantly happy with that. Um, similar with the clerk's department or clerk's office, assessor's office, this also didn't come as a surprise. Um, I was actually a little bit surprised that so many folks were so happy because these are the folks that equate value to their home, which drives their taxes. Um, but I think I saw comments in the narrative saying that they at least felt that the assessing process was fair and that they were able to get. Responses to the question that they had. Human Services, again, majority satisfied or no opinion. Um, planning, you kind of see more of that bell curve of um. Kind of equal amounts, happy and unhappy, um, however, um. A little bit less on the very satisfied. Building Department, um, similarly, a little more very satisfied and satisfied, a lot, no opinion. Um, Public Health, pretty um, favorable rating there as far as the number of that are very satisfied or satisfied. Sheriff's Office, a similar situation. Uh, I was really pleased to see this. Um, where the majority of respondents saying that they're satisfied or very satisfied, and then a few folks that are unhappy. As is always the way in life. And search and rescue, um, people were either very satisfied. That was the highest percentage of any county service that we surveyed on, um, followed by satisfied and then no opinion. So. I'll share that with you. Um, I'm really, I think that this was the most interesting one. Please rank the priorities you think commissioners should be uh, allocating funding to. This graph I thought was interesting, and this is what I spoke to earlier. Road maintenance and repairs led the charge, followed by wildfire mitigation, then workforce housing, then mental behavioral health. Childcare assistance, law enforcement, public health, parks and open space, senior services. Um, I should say environmental resiliency and protection followed lastly by senior services. And then again, uh, what should they be allocating for funding to? A lot of folks skip this question. Um, if, if it wasn't listed above, you can see kind of the word cloud, uh, infrastructure, transportation, planning. Um, housing. And then this was the one that I spoke of also, how satisfied are you with the, um, the services that you receive for your taxes? And I tried to remind folks that, um, the county receives approximately twenty percent of the property. Total property taxes that are paid, the other eighty percent are going to our other twenty-four taxing districts in the county. Um, but even still, when I was reading through responses, I saw for some of the answers when they said they're very dissatisfied. And I dug into those, um, a lot were talking about specific services from special districts, from their incorporated towns where they lived. Um, so that made me feel a little better that they weren't talking about necessarily, and that is not true for everybody. Some folks had dissatisfaction with. Specific county services, but there is also some conflation is what I'm trying to say of what we were asking versus how they responded. With who they were responding to. And then would you support um, paying higher taxes? Um, and then I asked folks to rate those ones which uh, they would support higher taxes for. And we will um, share those answers with you. Are there things that the county should be engaging more, more in? We look at the. Planning wildfire, affordable housing. Are there things we should not be involved in? Affordable housing. Um. Taxes, lawsuits. So, um. This is more proof to not, it's kind of difficult to please everybody, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't always try. this is more proof to not, it's kind of difficult to please everybody, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't always try. Um, how satisfied are you, uh, with the level of communication? Megan Knowles, great job. Very satisfied. They feel like they're receiving adequate communication. Additional comments, um, they would like us to hear. These are again narrative answers. And we will supply, um, additional comments. Majority of folks saying no. Um, about twenty-eight percent said yes, twenty-nine percent said yes, and then they specified in their narrative answers below. So that was, um, that effort, and I think we need to find a way to get more respondents next time, and I think that might come at a timing of surveying effort, because I know ours came on the heels of several other community surveys, including those that were pretty, uh, enormous surveys. So I think when folks see the opportunity for a survey, they might have had survey fatigue. So we'll try to do it a different time of year next year so we can get more responses. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. Um, I think that's a really high-quality survey, and I agree it'd be great to get more responses, but, um, I and I also appreciate your suggestion of continuing this annually. Um, Mike, is it easy for you to share that survey with us so we can like run some cross tabs if that's of interest to us or something without getting into your Survey Monkey, um, account? Is there a way to do that?
Yes, we will figure out how to do that. We'll sure.
Just, but it's great. I really appreciate it, and I think it will be helpful as we move into goal-setting next week.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments or questions for County Manager Burdonia? Seeing none, um, Mr. Biggs, do you have anything to add?
Oh, yeah. Nothing much to add. I've been head down in budget development for some reason.
We'll talk to you on the twentieth.
So we'll be, we'll be talking quite a bit, um, and we've got some housing things to talk about next week as well, so.
Excellent.
There'll be plenty.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to commissioner updates. Commissioner Gleason, I know you were writing some notes earlier. Would you like to share?
Sure, I'd love to. Um, I was out last week. And feeling very recharged. Thank you. Um, on the thirty-first, I attended the Department of Homeland Security Emergency and Disaster Considerations for Executives Workshop. Um, it was very informative. I'm really glad I attended. Um, I was in attendance with county staff, Jared Biggs was there, as well as, um, our attorney, Mara Fahey. Um, and it prompted me to revisit our county emergency operations plan. And, um, my takeaway is I'm wondering if in the past that, um, there's ever been a like a work session for commissioners to get together and visit that plan together. Um, I think it'd be really helpful to have Shannon Armstrong in the house and, uh, just have her highlight that plan with us and just as a like, um, revisiting of who's on first. Uh, so that's, that's my suggestion and takeaway from that workshop, um, perhaps in October or November, um, definitely out of Shannon's height of, uh, emergency response season of, of potential fires. I know she's always on, uh, anything can happen at any time, um, but I think it would be really worthwhile to kind of tackle that together. Um, I attended the CCI Renewable Energy Working Group, and, um, this was prompted uh, because of upca- upcoming, um, policy that is being crafted by the state legislature, um, on potential, um, statewide uh, land use code for renewable projects, um, that could potentially be mandated. Um, and so there's a lot of concern on the county level about what that might look like. So CCI is developing, um, white papers, taking perspectives from counties to, uh, to bring to the state legislature, um. And the governor has put together a uh, it's currently in process evaluation and assessment of local government processes for the citing of commercial clean energy and energy transmission projects. Um, so the feedback is directly on this, this working document. Um, and so the feedback that was given from the working group, uh, ranged from, um, first off, just concerns about how this being potentially mandated, and a lot of counties like our own have already been working on developing our own um, regulations for clean energy, solar, uh, wind, geothermal, et cetera. Um, but some counties do not have any kind of ten forty-one regs or, or land use regulations um, of this type and really don't have the capacity to develop them. So there's concerns from some of those counties that, that, that this would just be kind of shoved down their throats in a way without a lot of feedback. Um, there, some of the counties that have had a lot of renewable projects cited in, in their jurisdiction, um, have imposed excise taxes, um, have been developing impact fees, um. And also like, uh, community development funds, just to kind of offset the, the impacts to the economies or the, the environment, so on and so forth. So those examples were, were discussed. Um, and then, uh, one thing that I thought was interesting and just through, uh, you know, honestly, a lot of the discussion, I would say ninety percent of it revolved around solar, um. So, uh, you know, that it was, it was pretty specific to, to solar, specifically large solar arrays, um. But there was a good discussion around prioritizing developing transmission line connectivity in rural Colorado to make renewable projects more viable. And I, I thought that was a good takeaway and something productive that hopefully can be taken to the state level to think about developing transmission lines or en- encouraging, um, transmission lines to be developed in rural Colorado to, to make these projects viable. Um, so this is going to be an ongoing working group, um, but it was great to take part in the conversation.
Gleene, I have a question for you, and thank you so much. Thank you so much for attending that. I think you'll have so much value to add, given how engaged you were with our solar regulations. And I'm apologize if I missed this, but did you get a sense that what might come down for the from the state would override the work we've already done? Or is it more they're trying to provide regulations for people that don't have them? Maybe you don't know that yet, but I'm just curious.
That's to be determined, um, and what the counties are really, really hoping for is to have an option to vie out of this if they have, if we've developed our own regulations or ten forty-one. So, um, that, that is to be determined.
But that was the feedback.
From my understanding.
That was the feedback from the counties that it would be an optional opt-in kind of thing.
Yeah, that's what the counties would like to see.
And that's great.
In a kind of best case or best case scenario, I guess. Yeah. Yep.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
Not about that. Nope.
Okay. Um, and then yesterday I attend, as Mr. Burdonia, uh, said, I attended the Chavino Conservation District barbecue at the Placerville Park. It was lovely. I was the recipient of some of that, um, Chavino Special Sauce Compost Extract, um, which I then ran home and applied to my fruit trees. I am such a soil dork, um, so. It was very exciting to see that. Um, and then I did stay for the board meeting, um. Brief synopsis, um, Chris Hazen gave a presentation on the PEZ program, indicating that they signed on six new landowners this season and have had continued land participation from all participants in seasons past, so they currently have, um, fifteen clients, uh, through PEZ. Um, David Dearstein, who is a soil scientist and a consultant for the PEZ program, um, dis- described the program as marrying two unlikely partners, the ag and environmental communities in, in a really synergistic way, and it's really working. Um, he is interested, as is Chris Hazen, in pursuing a side-by-side comparison demonstration to really show people the practices in play and how they are really beneficial, um, but that costs money, so they're kind of exploring how to do that. Um, another thing that came to light through their presentation is just the exacerbated prairie dog issue that is occurring on Wright's Mesa right now, um, because of the drought, lack of water, and it's becoming a real problem. Um, so they discussed some concepts of how to overcome that real big challenge, um, and have been talking with landowners on ways to mitigate that. Um, and it's, I see it hmm, in the neighborhood for sure, um, so that, that was brought up. Um, they discussed NRCS funding and staff cuts that have, have occurred, um, with the new administration and how that is affecting Chavino Conservation District fiscally and on project capability, specifically engineering. Um, and kind of on the dovetailing into that, um, they handed me a request, Janet Cask was actually not, she wasn't able to attend the board meeting. Um, so I was there solely as a representative for the county, um, and so she, they handed me a requ- a funding request of twenty thousand dollars to help offset federal fund cuts. And their ambitions to increase services to San Miguel County, including vegetation management, composting efforts, education and outreach, um, and this funding ask would help leverage them to match funds from federal, state and private sources that they are creatively trying to find to, to fund their, their, uh, organization. Um, so I will hand that request to Mike Burdonia, um, and then we can dive into it deeper. And they, uh, said that they would love to either zoom in or come and meet with the commissioners, um, at a later date to discuss at length their request. But they wanted to put it in front of me because they knew I would be there. Um, yeah. That's all I have to report. Oh, on the Chavino Conservation District, uh, I will be attending, um, next Thursday, the twenty-first, the Guinness and Dolores Rivers Watershed Association Annual Meeting, and then boogying back if we have, uh, the, a follow-up on our budget, um, meeting that afternoon. But I am going to attend that on behalf of the county. Yep.
Great.
Thank you, Commissioner. Quick question about the, uh, Wright's Mesa Prairie Dog problem. Is the problem surfacing in, um, agricultural areas or is it in the, um, land is riddled with holes and it's not possible to, to ride a horse safely? What's the biggest concern?
The issue is, it's surfacing on lands that are not being irrigated. And so that is some ag land where, um, you know, uh, land users are choosing to divert their water in a certain direction, maybe water certain pastures, let some go fallow. Um, but it's, the land is getting so dry that not even certain weeds are able to exist there, um, and so then it becomes just riddled with prairie dogs and and be, it, it's, it's a mix of productive ag lands and just lands people own that aren't maintaining them or able to put water on the land.
I guess I'm still a little unclear if you have a field that's fallow and the prairie dogs inhabit it, and then you decide to reactivate that, that, uh, parcel. Is the prairie dog infestation going to reduce yield or is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's really hard to bring a piece of land like that back. It pretty much takes mitigation of some kind, um, to eliminate the prairie dog issue and then get i- in a, in good working order to actually plant, um, and irrigate.
Got it. Thanks. Um, I'm glad that that problem is in the hands of experts.
It, it is, uh, but it also isn't.
I'm not sure that our twenty thousand dollar potential commitment is going to fix that, but it's good to know that that's an area of focus.
Yeah, absolutely. And to be continued in a later discussion, I would say.
Yes.
With the experts.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I have an update for you, um, and I have a question for Commissioner Gleason. Since it's been in the newspaper, I, I think it's okay to address. Is there any, um, movement on getting a meeting with, um, Mountain Village and the Four Seasons people? And while you, well, before you respond, I drove to CCAT last week with Commissioner Jake Nice from Yarray and was talking to him about that, um, you know, the concerns on the west end of Montrose County. He was unaware about the lease at the Mountain Lodge in Ridgeway. And so, um, I let him know that you have this working group pulled together, and he was going to uh, refer over the town of Ridgeway or city, um, council so that they might participate since they will also have impacts.
Thank you for bringing this up. Yes, so, um, I have been co-spearheading this group to, um, to ask for a meeting with the Four Seasons developers and Town and Mountain Village representatives. We have a date set for September eleventh in Naterita. Um, and I, I actually have reached out to DOLA representatives to, to help navigate this um, and potentially even, um, help moderate this meeting. Um, but yeah, that both, both parties have agreed to this meeting time and date, um, as well as all the signees onto the letter that was submitted, um, and so there's movement and, um, you know, that's great that you communicated with Commissioner Nice about this. Um, my efforts have been really focused on the west end communities, um. But I think it might be really helpful to, for them to potentially, uh, attend that meeting because I think there may be similar concerns, so.
Yeah, different scale, obviously, but also something to consider and, and like the community of Naterita being concerned about their, I believe, single hotel being turned into lodging. That was Commissioner Nice's concern about the Ridgeway Hotel as well.
Great, yeah. Offline, and if you even want to give me, connect me with Commissioner Nice, I've
Mm-hmm.
Yep, that would be good.
Will do.
Thanks.
Okay, um, onto my update. So, yeah, since last week, let me get to there. Um, I did spend a bit, uh, or most of Thursday and Friday at the CCAT meeting, which is always so interesting and productive and fun. Um, they are other, you know, like-minded county, county commissioners, and, and I just learned so much from all of them, um, as well as the staff. So I would say the bulk of our meeting was spent discussing concerns that at the state level about, um, a reduction in income tax revenue that the state anticipates at about one point two billion dollars for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. So Colorado is required by our constitution, the legislature and the governor to set a balanced budget, and they did that. And you may remember that was arduous and a little bit painful, but it was achieved. Um, this is a curious situation whereby our tax collections are directly connected to federal tax collections because of the way our kind of income tax returns flow together. And so because there were a number of federal tax reductions or continuation of federal tax cuts, um, the waterfall effect of that on the Colorado budget and our revenues is one point two billion dollars. So, um, the governor, as you may have heard, has called a special session for August twenty-first for our state legislative. for our state legislature to come together. And the primary reason they're coming together is to address this deficit. We were addressed by Speaker of the House Julie McCloskey, as well as Chair of the Joint Budget Committee, Senator Jeff Bridges. They let us know that of that $1.2 billion, it's anticipated that about a third of that will come from spending cuts. And again, that's within this current year fiscal year budget. About a third will coming from, will come from closing income tax loopholes, which I didn't get a lot of clarity on. Obviously that'll come as the special session unfolds, but it included not implementing some tax credits that only kick in in times of, you know, good economic times, which we are now not in. And then a third would come from the state reserves. And the state reserves are fairly healthy, as I recall. But, um, the sort of state economists are predicting about a 50% chance of recession in Colorado in the next two years. So the legislature wants to be cautious about pulling from reserves more than a third of the deficit. Another topic of conversation, and just interrupt me if anybody has questions. Another topic that will be addressed by the special session is called the Health Insurance Affordability Enterprise. And, um, I've mentioned to you in my last update or one recent that, next year's health insurance premiums across Colorado are anticipated to rise 28% and 40% specifically in rural Colorado. Evidently, and maybe someone else can, can confirm this for me. We are this Western Colorado, the Western slope is the second most expensive insurance district in the country. And we are now anticipating a 40% increase. In the, um, one big beautiful bill, um, there were a couple of funding sources eliminated that the state might have used to kind of, um, support those increases to kind of offset them. And those two funding sources have been cut by, by the big beautiful bill. So there is a proposal, um, being put forth, I believe by Summit County, to put a hundred dollar-ish fee on health insurance policies in the state in order to continue our reinsurance program that had been funded by these other streams. And evidently, the governor and the legislature are fairly opposed to fees generally because of the cost of living in Colorado. But the way this was described to me, it made a lot of sense because it's possible that if each of us buying our insurance could pay this additional hundred dollars because it would apply to reinsurance, we could conceivably reduce people's premiums by thousands of dollars. So I know this is a little bit, um, fast and furious, but because the special session begins next week, um, I'd just like to hear how the other commissioners feel about my reaching out to Senator Simpson and also Representative Don Soukla to see where they are feeling about this health insurance affordability enterprise area and whether we could, um, you know, hear what their current thinking is and perhaps influence them to support this, this fee. I know, again, I can, I could probably bring back more information next week, um, as it becomes available. But, um, if anybody has a gut feeling about this, I would love to hear it and also from staff.
And do you have, have any material we could read on this? Some just like deeper information, just to kind of?
Not yet. Let me, let me see if I can request that from CCAT, um, because that would certainly be helpful for all of us. Um, let me see.
My gut is it seems like it is a good, could be a good thing, um, considering what people are facing or will be facing. But I would like to just learn a little more about it.
That makes a lot of sense. Any other thoughts on that?
I'm with Galina and, uh, it seems like you'll have more information along with what's already available shortly. So maybe we can, um, spend a little time researching before we take action.
That sounds reasonable. Um, the other thing that I wanted to bring up is, and Mike references when he was talking about our next meeting is, so we did spend also time in addition to talking about the special session, going over certain legislative priorities. And we are going to be asked to complete a survey by August 29th to kind of evaluate these various legislative proposals. And so we, as we did last year, Lance, you may recall, kind of thumbs up, thumbs down, neutral, that kind of thing. So I think I've sketched that in for the 20th, but we can also do it on the 27th if we need to. And I do expect to get some written materials prior to that, um, from CCAT. Nothing was presented last week. It was just conversation, but, um, I will get those two as soon as possible because we'll need to weigh in. And I do have notes on all of them too, that I can, um, kind of augment our conversation with.
If it's okay, I'd like to add those to the same meeting as, for next week as CCATs.
That's the same thing. That is, that's it.
Oh, got it.
That's the same item. Yeah. Yeah, I don't have anything yet from CCI. They're a little bit further down, um, down the, we're not there yet. And by the way, this is all legislative priorities for the 2026 session, which doesn't begin until January, but staff is asking for, you know, early direction in terms of where they spend their time. CCAT staff and lobbyists.
Sounds good.
That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, the only report I have is that I was at the IG meeting yesterday. Nope, scratched that. Two days ago and introduced Maria to the group. Uh, she was well received. And then I unfortunately had to step away right as Kay Simonsen was finishing up, an explanation of our efforts to update and reexamine the land use code in regard to the creation of housing while maintaining, um, the quality of life here in San Miguel County. And as I was departing, there were some questions from other members of the group regarding projects that were in the pipeline or starting to be in the pipeline or on the future and how to incorporate those into the existing, um, housing needs assessment. I wasn't able to hear the conclusion of that conversation, but perhaps Mike or Jared were able to track the rest of that meeting for me.
Sure. I, I was luckily sitting at the table, having a chat about those things and, and definitely heard, you know, some of the nuance of how we are counting, um, different units that get developed either by any one of our jurisdictions or in tandem with our jurisdictions towards our big goals. You know, the housing needs assessment identified a demand of, you know, 1,114 units. And as, as I've talked with the commissioners about this, you know, that number will move up, that number will move down. You know, that's kind of a trajectory target that we are working towards. And we're going to have to work together with all of our partners to make headway. I, I think there is some concern about, um, who gets credit. And, and I think we'll work through those issues. I think those who are paying get the most credit, obviously. But where housing gets placed, we'll also give a little bit of credit. And, you know, we'll be working on that throughout. And so with, with that, we kind of, kind of refocused to our effort to evaluate our land use code. And, and I've been thinking about it over the last couple of days. And really, our effort now is see if we can crack any nuts to get, you know, a little bit more into that wavelength and not really mince, uh, how those projects that have been proposed are going to be split. Um, and so that's, that's where, where I'm hoping our focus with this effort will go. It's not just like, hey, we've got a big blockbuster project coming down the block, but also how can we get more aid use? Because that really has not resulted, our efforts on aid use have not resulted in a lot of housing. Is that a, you know, is that a, uh, inhibition or a challenge of our code? Or is it just, it doesn't pencil out here, right? Those are the kind of things that I think this analysis is going to pick apart. And then when it comes down to those big blockbuster efforts, I think we're just going to be working with our partners at the towns or working with our partners at the state and other levels to, um, you know, figure out how we can make those work and, um, count how, how many units we get after the fact. Um, and, and put those, um, in each of our individual reports and, and show progress, um, till our next housing needs assessment. So.
Regarding how all that's counted, um, there was a, quite a bit of conversation at CCAT last week about, when we're talking about legislative priorities, about fixes to Proposition 123, which was passed by the voters, but the legislature evidently is authorized to, you know, tweak it so that it can be implemented more easily. And one of the, um, proposals is to develop regional partnerships for housing so that the jurisdictions can work cooperatively together. And, um, that would help, you know, with the whole counting thing, right? If we work as a region as opposed to, to individually. So it's something we'll see if that passes. I'm, I, it sounded like it was kind of a no brainer for those who know more about it than I. And that would be something that we could explore down the road as a region.
I, I wholeheartedly agree, Commissioner Brown. I think the, you know, when we talk about Prop 123 and counting, I know Dreya has talked about it a little bit. I've talked about it a little bit. You know, this is the concept that we've committed to 11 units by the end of 2026. And the Town of Mountain Village and the Town of Taliuride, they've committed to their own numbers. And so, you know, parsing, if a house gets built in Ilium, who, who gets to count it, right? That's, that's the challenge. And to that point, and it being kind of a no brainer, why can't we each have half, right? Or however it goes. Or there's, I believe you mentioned last week that there's a concept of double counting, that the county counts it as one and the town would count it as one. However, that works out, great. But we're, we're really just counting for the state rule. And, and I want to keep our sights on counting towards, we're building, housing units, um, that people can live in. And it doesn't matter who built them or really where they're at if they're serving folks. And I don't, I don't want that to get lost in the, the rest of the sauce, so to speak.
And that's how the other folks are feeling around the state as well, Jared. And the double counting, I understand, is off the table.
Shout.
I, I also heard another part of the discussion during the IG meeting, and that was, uh, comments from, um, Tyra and Mountain Village leaders stating that the majority of this growth, because the unincorporated county number within the subset of the 1,100 homes that Jared shared from the, the housing needs assessment, uh, was equated to the need for unincorporated county. There, I heard pushback on that and that the majority of development, because the towns are, um, at least Taliuride is closer to build out, um, is that they foresee a lot of those, um, additional units in the 1,100 going into the unincorporated county and a request for partnerships, but partnerships beyond letters of support or permitting and things. I think those were, um, because I've heard also additional requests for, we want to see more shared funding between the towns of Tyra and Mountain Village and the county for each other's projects. And I think that's, that's likely to be where it's going to be a more difficult conversation because now we each have our own dedicated funding streams. We each have our own projects. I think we've been thinking about our funding streams in relationship to our own projects that we're, we're in the process of developing. So I think that's a, a difficult conversation that should occur at some point in the near future of what do, what does quote unquote partnerships actually mean? Is this, um, for instance, I know we supported the intersection improvements for Ilium as a part of the, one of the highest priorities for the next 10-year CDOT, uh, plan for funding. But is that, is that the level of partnership that we're, we're looking for with our town partners? Or do we want to have a discussion about putting our, our funds all closer into one pot? And then taking turns of who's going to use that pot of funding? And I think that's, that's, I just wanted to identify what I think is a potential elephant in the room as far as what partnerships mean, because we do hear a lot from the public of, we don't want you to be so silent. We want you to be working together on these projects. But I think it also begs the question of where, where should the growth for the needs of towns be or for those in the unincorporated county be? I don't, I, I think that's a longer discussion that we'll need to have in, in the near future.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sure. All right. We seem to have reached, uh, the end of our commissioner updates. And I would suggest we move on to item number 11, which is attorney matters. And Maura is with us. Good afternoon, Ms. Fahy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just have two quick litigation related updates to share with you. The first one you may have seen in the news, which is how I found out, um, related to the Measure 3A litigation, which, um, to remind everyone is, was involving the gondola funding measure that the county had previously been dismissed as a party to that case. The court did issue its ruling last week, um, in favor of SMART, finding that the plaintiffs, um, had failed to show that the election in any way didn't comply with the statutory or constitutional requirements. So that's effectively upholding Measure 3A. Um, so that was good news. And then the other update, um, I did share with you over email, but for everyone else's benefit in the public, we received a decision on Monday from the court in the Lucarelli litigation, which involves the Diamond Ridge property. And in that decision, the court, it's a little bit complex. So I don't want to get too into the weeds. But in short, the court sided with the county in finding that the parcel C portion of the Diamond Ridge property, which is the portion that had been rezoned, um, as community housing, that that piece of the property was not subject to the 1991 PUD regulations. Um, and that's the PUD that created the Aldisoro neighborhood, the airport. And, yeah, so that, that means it's not restricted by the PUD, that, that piece of the Diamond Ridge property. And I still need to put my head together with Kay Simonsen and Mike and Jared for us to sort out. Um, now that this round of litigation is complete in this phase, what that might mean for that property going forward. So we could bring that to the commissioners at a future meeting.
Thank you.
I'd like to, that, that'd be great, Maura.
All right. We'll look forward to that conversation. Are there any questions for Maura? Seeing none, we have reached the end of our agenda and I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Have an excellent afternoon.
Thanks, Lance. Thanks, everyone.